Is. Can Neville participate? Is he able to participate or the way she?
Yeah, Neville, can you let us know that you're online, please? Neville, you're gonna have to acknowledge that you're online for us to get the meeting going so that we've got a forum.
Do you want to delay the start just for a moment?
Okay, Neville, if we can hear from you, we're going to have to delay the start, so we'll come back on in about 10, 12 minutes after, I would say around the, just before 5:15.
Sorry, yes, no, he's unmuted.
I, Neville, if you'll acknowledge it there.
Did he mute him?
Okay.
Did you not mute it?
Sorry. Yeah. Okay, welcome to the February 6th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and it is 5:12. And we have some feedback. Houston, we have feedback.
Yeah, I'm doing that. That's me. Proceed.
Okay, we'll call the meeting into order and the adoption of the agenda. Any changes, adjustments to the agenda?
We had public participation at the beginning.
Okay. Any objections left? Anything else?
I have not had time to get to the package you wrote yesterday, so I'm not in position to approve minutes. But I was.
I'm not either.
What you're saying, would you have any to do with?
No. I, and I, could I just speak to the agenda generally here?
Yes.
So. Just a few observations. You know, we are fortunate to have an informed and engaged electorate in our community. And it seems to me that during a budget process, especially where public engagement is vital, we have a responsibility to accommodate this obligation to residents. We've now had a number of meetings at different times and seen residents show up. I see we've got more here tonight than we have previously. But this is, to be clear, although it's a committee of the whole, it's a regularly scheduled meeting of council, published in our yearly calendar, and as per requirement, must begin at 6:00 or 7:00 PM as per our procedures by law. And to facilitate public engagement, any open portion must begin at 7:00 as per precedent practice and reasonable expectation of residents. I'd say don't let anybody tell you differently. Our CIO was made aware of this last week, and yet here we are at 5:00 PM, again, without a provision for public participation. I know what it's like to be on the other side of this table and outside this room. I showed up plenty of times to speak at the last council. It's not always an easy thing for residents to do. But luckily for me, the last council provided a forum in that respect and for my letters to be published, and I compliment them for that. That's how it should be. Us here today, I don't think we're doing so well. And don't even get me started about correspondence that never sees the light of day. I think we need to do things right and do it by procedure. I think there's an important principle at stake here generally, and it goes to the heart of our obligation to residents, and it's one I take seriously. And for that reason, I cannot approve this agenda in principle. I'm sure others will, but that's my position. And I would just say, for God's sake, let's please start doing things the right way.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Reuter. Anyone else have any comments? Councilor Brown?
Through the chair, I believe we talked about earlier starts in a previous meeting. And while there was quite rigorous discussion about it, I think we did agree up until this meeting that we would have a 5:00 PM start. So that certainly is my recollection and so but after, after today, I think we called it that. One of the concerns was that council kind of would find it challenging to be here before 6:00, and she had indicated that she would not be able to be at this meeting. That's what I remember specifically. So anyway, I certainly, you know, hear the concern, but I don't think there's been any, anything untoward happen here at all. We've agreed to try to get started earlier to have fulsome and discussion. And I think after, after today, we certainly may wish to not meet ahead of the 6 o'clock time with timeline that we've talked about. But certainly today was, was consistent with the number that we had set up.
Okay.
Certainly, we must force a single when your hours are out. I was one of the ones that probably confused until last meeting. I thought we were talking about special meetings starting at 5:00, not regular meetings. I do agree with Morris. The regular meeting should go back to 6:00 and 7:00 problems. But special meetings, we can talk about.
All right.
Okay.
My understanding was this was a committee of the whole, and I think our CIO, Mr. Blackwell, had made it clear that unfortunately, this council has struggled over the last year, and we haven't kept up with the business of the village. So we've fallen very much behind, and I think this was an effort by our CIO to try to help us get caught up as a committee and as a council. So I was very much on site. I think that as a council, ideally, this, this year that we're in, we're already two months into this year, almost two months, I think we've got to focus on the business of the village. And Mr. Blackwell, can you please give us a little further explanation of why we've started this committee of the whole at 5:00 versus 7:00?
Sure, so the simple answer is budget discussions are inherently complicated. There is typically, council takes a full advantage of the full evenings that it has, which at normal start times takes council fairly consistently to 10:30, which is the latest council can go. It's hard for people to absorb information, process information, reconcile information. So it's just good practice in my experience to sort of deal with these complicated matters, which is the budget. It doesn't extend to other items necessarily earlier to ensure everyone is kept as fresh as possible, to make sure the decision making is optimized. So this is for, the intent of this is for the benefit of council. It's not to hinder or compromise anything. It's to help. But of course, all of these decisions rest solely with council. I can always provide advice based on my experience, which is what I do, what I'm asked to do, what I'm expected to do. And that's what I have been doing. If council doesn't like that advice, it's absolutely free to follow whatever you choose to do.
Okay, with that, with the change to the agenda of adding public participation, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So most.
Second?
And remove the meetings in the minutes?
I'm fine with the minutes. I've read them, but.
I'm comfortable discussing the minutes, yeah.
I haven't read them.
Oh, I haven't read them.
I haven't read this package at all.
Okay, with that in mind, there's four counselors here, so if you haven't read them, they won't be approved, obviously. So I guess we'll eliminate unless there's any other complaints or adjustments.
So they'll come up the next maybe the whole meeting then?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
To the minutes, to the.
To the adjusted agenda. Okay, those opposed, proposed, in partial carry. Okay, we'll move right to unfinished business of the participation. Sorry. Those in the gallery, any comments? No? Okay, online? Do we have anyone online? Nora Rogers, hold your hand up. Would you go to Nora, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good. So I'm confused by the information provided on the budget supplemental form asking for council approval to borrow 1.35 million plus taxes to purchase a new fire engine. Under insurance implications, it is stated that engines under 15 years old receive 100% rating. Engines 16 to 20 years old receive 50% rating and must be used as a spare or in support only. And 20-year-old engines receive 0% ratings. Our fire engines are 14 and 24 years old. However, according to the Fire Underwriters Survey, small communities with populations of 1,000 to 30,000 are approved to use fire engines up to 20 years of age for first-line duty. Also, it states that due to municipal budget constraints within small communities, equipment may continue to be recognized for fire insurance grading past 20 years of age if annual tests deem acceptable mechanical condition. So you'll see where my confusion arises from. Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll have the fire chief. The fire chief is going to be speaking a little later to the supplement, so we'll discuss that. We will, we'll call on you in a moment. Okay, any other questions? No other questions?
Great.
Okay, we're gonna move right to the staff and fire chief. We'll invite you on, fire chief. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, I guess.
Chief, are you gonna just walk us through the supplements?
Sure.
And I'm sure you'll answer that question that was posed.
Sure, I think I'll go straight into the biggest bill of the ball, which is the fire truck, which was brought up just recently. The answer to that question in general, if you dig further through the Fire Underwriters Survey, you'll find that it is highly recommended not to attempt to use the truck after 15 years. They find that. Well, I know with 24-year-old truck, that's out of the question, so now we're just speaking to the 14-year-old truck that could potentially be used for a few years more. But the newest truck, our 14-year-old truck right now, although it is in good operating condition right now, and we maintain it the best that we can, it will not pass a the in-depth testing that is needed to get that added 50%. The testing that is carried is not only kind of pump water, it's acceleration, it's braking, it's frame condition, it's chassis condition, it's pump capacity, it's all these sort of things. And what Fire Underwriters Survey is saying, with 95% of these applications to extend the life, the trucks don't make it to the as-new condition that they need to be in to be certified, to qualify to that level. So yeah, it's a possibility. According to Fire Underwriters Survey, roughly 5% of the trucks that do undergo the extenuating testing will submit, but they highly recommend that the condition of the trucks, although mileage is low and that sort of thing, the truck go from sitting to 110% working, sitting to 110% working, on and off, and it's very hard on the trucks, deteriorating, and they, they find that the majority don't pass the test, so yes.
Do we do those yearly tests, or is this just when required?
So there's.
So I understand it. It's an actual yearly test once it gets to the 15 years and beyond?
Yeah, yearly you would have to do it after that 15 years, do the pump testing to, and then reapply for the basically, it's an exemption, or maybe it may not be called an exemption, but those additional years, you have to have the yearly testing. We do do the TBI inspections every year for insurance purposes, and keep everything legal like that. But the extra testing for these extra years is over and above with regards to the level of testing that is required to then in turn get the 50%, should it be one of the five percent that our underwriter survey has seen pass to the as-new condition or as described, as required to get that. So yes, we could try it. We could spend the money to have the truck tested and go down that route and see how long it can. If it will pass, and then we can try to do that year to year. But essentially, that's, it's, we're kicking the can down the road. This, if it was gonna be something like that, we're not getting away from spending the funds. If we're gonna kick the can down the road, in my thinking, we should start contributing to a bank saving up for these potential funds. But of course, y'all understand that. The yeah, we, we could try the testing. I am not overly confident that it will pass to the level that is required to get the 50%. Yes, sir.
So. Yeah, just I would presume that in the case of equipment like this, that maintenance is absolutely job one.
Yeah.
Right, and to have a good maintenance and a good relationship with a with a good mechanic, that I presume that's always important.
Yes.
And so I guess I'm not quite understanding, if the maintenance has been done, I presume, why we would be fearing that we might not pass on the scheduled areas where the truck needs to pass to achieve its rating?
So a lot of the stuff is, reading the, the underwriters, a lot of the stuff is stresses on the chassis. It's supply of parts, because as these trucks age, they carry a specific amount of parts, and they're just not available. That particular truck has, forgive my terminology if I get it wrong, I believe it incandescent lighting or regular full-holt lighting. Whereas the new ones have
LED.
LED and lighter. As all the burnt out, we've had to swap in the LEDs where they used to be incandescent. And that's a little bit of the problem with electrical systems. We are having the odd occasion where we're sitting on the highway in a vulnerable spot with all the lights on, all of a sudden the power shuts down. And so there's electrical gremlins somewhere in there due to the, well, all the work that's been done to try to keep these trucks running over the years. There's the pump, pumps, pump water, I'm, there's two stages or what's called a pressure governor or a two-stage pump. And what the pressure governor does, it'll either take a reading, like if I'm gonna pump to 100 PSI or whatever I choose to blow my lines, I can set the electronics to either read 100 PSI, and if somebody opens or closes a line, the truck will already adjust to keep that 100 PSI, or I can set it in what's called RPM mode, where I'll take it up to the pressure I want, hit a button, and it's just gonna keep that RPM. Where that, like, it's advantageous to have it in the pressure mode just because we're opening and closing lines, and as Carl Delia, as you open those lines, pressure changes. So that truck can build up to the right RPM to supply the need of pressure is, is very beneficial. It doesn't work ours. We have to pump in RPM mode, so that if pumps water, it's fine. We have to have somebody sit by the truck and running it. But it's in that RPM mode. If somebody shuts a line, then our pressure's gonna go up because we're not supplying anymore. So now we have to dial back and catch the RPM and reset the RPM. If somebody opens, well then, where it's gonna be low pressure, so now we have to dial it back up. So there's little, there's electronic issues, not only with lighting, with pumping systems. Yep, we've got lights on it. It works. It passes commercial vehicle inspections, all that sort of stuff, and we've maintained them as best we can. But I I, there's, there's little gremlins in the details. Those are a couple kind of focused ones. But that don't make me 100% confident that we're gonna get the as-needed by Fire Underwriters Survey to carry on additional years of service.
Hey, on further clauses?
Yeah.
Councilor Abbott?
Um. So but I spoke to an insurance broker, and we use, since we came out Canada, really experienced and spirited broker, and all kinds of insurance he's done for us. And I asked him about the Fire Underwriters Survey, and he wasn't sure how insurance companies used it. He wasn't sure how they used it, if they even looked at it. But he said to me, there's only one thing they ask you about fire. Oh, I told you, is it a fully protected, semi-protected, unprotected area? Fully protected, he says, eight kilometers from a fire hall and 1,000 feet from a hydrant. Now, assuming that means a functioning fire hall and a functioning fire hydrant, but that's all the only questions they ask. So I'm not sure if you know the answer, maybe you do, but so what do insurance companies use this? Because there's been this out there, well, if we don't get this new fire truck, all our insurance rates are down. So I sort of do the math, well, can afford insurance, is that gonna be cheaper than the rates going up? But we don't, you know, we don't wanna fund that final. Do you understand the connection between the two or not? Was that something?
Like, it's like, like you're being exposed to by asking this fellow about this. It's a pretty complex system. I did the same thing. I asked my insurance broker, what is it that you guys know? Like, how do you come up with these numbers? And essentially, there's tiers of insurance. So there's your regular ICBC front desk insurance person, then there's somebody more experienced, and then it goes all the way up through. And when I asked my regular home insurer and another member of ours, captain, well, one of our captains, she did the same thing, and she spoke to her insurance, and they both essentially came, well, they'll ask that basic question, is it fully or partially or not? And then they'll get a formula that they'll punch in, the address, yes, it's fully, it's partial, it's whatever. And then they'll put it in their system, and then a formula comes in that gives the rate or contributes to the the creation of the rate. It's that formula, and that formula comes from the Fire Underwriters Survey that looks at everything from municipalities, water, do we have a sustainable water system? Looks at the fire department, do we have the fire department? Do we have training? Do we have public education? We look, they look at the type of buildings, is it just a single-family residential? Or is it townhouses, is it in that field and all this sort of thing? So the Fire Underwriters actually look at the community in a whole what the fire risk is and all the stuff I've stated. And then they come up, they factor all those things together, and of course, under the fire department comes all these things of which the truck followed in the loop. And the distance for the hydrants, we have this service. We have functioning water. So the, I'm presuming, I'm just presuming places like Stracken Point, Ocean Point, Montezamberg, that are in no man's land, they don't have a functioning fire department. But they're within, some of them have their own private hydrants. Some of them have these different kind of parameters that the insurance people are looking for. Again, I'm guessing where the two tiers come in, but the Fire Underwriters, there's the basic formula that comes from the Fire Underwriters. There's all the brokers and brokerages underneath that then apply that formula to whatever the specifics are to their area, whether it be Austin lines baying for somebody to sell. And they compare those by putting in, are you fully serviced, are you this close to that, blah, 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 and it picks out a number at the bottom. So like I said, I'm not an insurance guy. Tried to dig into this. It's pretty complex. Or in doubt, question for the insurance brokers that I've tried going through, like I said, my own personal insurance broker, and then going straight to the Fire Underwriters and asking them how it works, and they just tell me, well, we factor in all this, blah, 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 blah. And then we come up with a number. The number is then used by insurance brokers in factoring your home insurance. Okay, well, how much did that make a difference? And they, then you get the answer, well, it depends. It depends on your rating, it depends on this and that, and it probably depends on the three factors that Councilor Abbott has spoken to.
Chief, if we have some questions along the way, I don't, this evening, sort of you present us, and we can answer some preliminary questions. If we have further questions, we can send you an email and get a response.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions this evening?
Just before we move on, so just getting back to the small community, now we won't see you listening, Ross also said it earlier today. So the small community up to 20 years can be used for frontline duty according to this table with that testing. Is that, is that your understanding as well?
That's not my understanding. It didn't need to be sensitive. I would have to double it again if it began.
You can look at it afterwards. See, there's no asterisks next to that second line. So small community, 20 years, and then below that.
Okay, so what's a small community according to this?
Oh, wait, like, business 30,000 or something.
Uh, where small communities are defined or incorporated communities that have a total population of that 1,000.
1,000 to 30,000.
Yeah, we have over 1,000 population.
Right, about 1,000 to 29,000.
Rural areas are defined as small, medium, all right?
And rural areas are defined as incorporated or unincorporated with a total population of less than 1,000, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
So maybe this, I mean, if we need to confirm this later, but I think before we pass this council, we should understand whether the 20-year limit is true, not the 15, only a small community.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell, can you give us background? This is for information tonight, we're not, we're not looking for this data.
No, I said before we come to the next meeting.
Yeah, so if I could, I would say absolutely. I mean, the big challenge for council is, you know, it's not it, it's a question of when and how prepared does council want to be for the day that a new track is needed, whether that be next year, whether it be five years, whether it be 10 years, you'll be there, save as much as you can going off in the future. So how I read this is that there is the ability to extend it to 20 years, but that needs to be clarified in the state and just to make sure we know that, that that's accurate. But regardless, we still don't have 1.3 million or whatever the case may be in the bank. And by the way, in five years, it's no longer 1.35 million, it's probably perhaps substantially higher than that. So council, you know, that quick, I did a quick calculation that I showed Councilor Abbott, and you know, based on the current value of a truck, which is 1.35 million.
So the, a few seconds, comment on that. That is going for a bare-bones, off-the-shelf truck from a purchasing agent that, I guess, is almost like a co-op. It's called the commute that purchases you. They said base truck, base truck, base truck. That is currently the lowest price for a base truck right now. That base truck is still a year out in manufacturing. So if we order today, it's not coming till this time next year. There's very little room for adjustments and specifications. There is a little, so it'll probably take us a couple of months to come up with the exact parameters of what we want. And then a year after that. So we're looking, if we order today, it's a year and a And then a year after that, so we're looking, if we order today, it's a year and a year, year and a half out and.
Um, so, so where I was going with that is um based on, just based on, just stick in the or on the water. Based on a fifteen year lifespan, it's different if it's twenty. Uh, based on that price, one point three five, whatever it is, that's about ninety thousand dollars a year. Council would have to set aside every year for fifteen years if it wanted to reach that one point three million dollar mark. Fifteen years, however, the difference in the cost. Is different and it's going to have gone up, so it may start for the first few years of nineteen, then it'll have to go up to a hundred. In order to to catch up the other, of course, the other approaches to borrow. But that is a turnoff, we'll talk about the options when that time comes.
So just one, one final question, have we ever? And uh, have we ever? Funded any of the apparatus uh through grants in this community?
Not to my awareness.
Yeah, the last truck was uh in part grant, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that seems to me would be a good thing to look into.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, two thousand dollars.
Two foot points, um, I just would be helpful if we had a sense of the cost of the uh testing. And a second thing would be whether the standards that that this truck was built to in two thousand and ten. Um, whether the standards, what the differences in standards is probably a little tougher for this truck to maybe meet the. The standard if the standard is improved, that's that's a thought I have. Uh, so it'd be interested just to know the cost of the testing. Um, and if if there are likely there's one in twenty of of that going through. Although I want some clarification on the twenty year matter as well. Second point I have though is the uh, the impact of of um. The preparation the community does in terms of fire safe. And with the uh, uh, well, Paris, we've experienced and so on. I think that's something we need to look at very carefully too in terms of impact on, it's not, it's not a fire truck issue, but in terms of. Of looking at all the different things that we need to 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 think about. Um, whether there's some investment we need to make in fire safe as well and and whether. You know, we may be maybe investing uh more money here in fire safety, maybe maybe other investment from the.
Council rose, um, thanks for that. If you can answer these questions quite quickly and then we'll move through, because I think we're going to run short of time for the.
I don't think those answers right now.
Okay, you have one on our smart real quick.
Okay.
I've applied for a grant and it's going through where I signed off on the paperwork that was done, it's gone for approval. It should pay for both uh uh equipment, training, um, a uh community fire smart uh. A coordinator and some um a critical re- um infrastructure mitigation. So, uh coordinator will come and educate, mitigation will. Uh, chop down and do some landscaping around critical infrastructure and then uh tools and training uh in addition. So that is in a grant right now that uh pretty sure is going to be approved. It was, I I signed it today and set the final thing in. The testing and the current standards, I'll have to, the cost of the testing, the current standards, I'll have to get back to you with. Secondly, with uh with that, sending these trucks out for testing, uh, that's, we're sending our newest truck out, the one we're talking about. We then don't have a truck in the which, we have a twenty four year old spare that is not qualified to stand. So sending these trucks out um leaves us.
Oh, okay. Uh, chief, thanks for for the explanation on the fire truck and that gives us a lot to think about. Uh, we've got the item.
There's one comment that that's great for clearing around infrastructure, we got that two years ago, we've done that work.
Uh, I've I've seen that done.
You wear that?
Yes, that was done, um, like there's uh.
It's okay, as long as you know where we haven't done that once before.
Yes, it's been done in some places, but there's other sectors.
Okay, so we've got the backhoe, the pentagon cutters, the member housing and support vehicle. So chief, I'm going to pass it back to you and and run through those.
Uh, next one is, is there a particular order you'd like to go?
No, just uh, we we've got it in the order of backhoe, pentagon cutters.
Okay, oh, uh, backhoe, okay, so up at our um. Uh, at our training facility, uh, well, let's uh back it up this way. Majority of our calls as found from um records from our uh Suri Fire Dispatch and our um F P M. We went to more car accidents than we did anything else um last year. So, not just because of that, but because of the high standard that we hold for auto extrication, we do a lot of training. Uh, with regards to auto extrication, the um. We had multiple vehicles to cut off and that's, we're going to talk about the pentagon uh cutters as well. But where this uh uh forklift or backhoe uh comes in. The current forklift that we have to move those cars around and put them on their bike or put them on our roof for training purposes and that. Is a nineteen forty six uh forklift that came from um the marina was uh, it was purchased and brought up. There are no parts for it, um. It needs a power steering pump, it needs brakes, uh, it's. Forty six years old and it's had a had a hard life. It is a danger to use. Um, I'm the only one that drives it just because I don't want other people in it. Uh, on occasion, um, the training officer will do a couple uh. A couple moves, so myself and the training officer are the only ones that use it. We have to crash into these volunteer truck, um, or donated vehicles to get things stopped or pull the e-brake. It's not a safe vehicle to be using uh for doing this. So what we're looking for is a replacement piece of machine, either a backhoe or another uh forklift that can uh operate on gravel. Um. And we believe that we can find one by auction, a used backhoe or used forklift for under the forty thousand dollars. And then that'll permit us to continue doing the training that we've been doing and needs to maintain our skills and uh. That to carry forward. So that's a, that request, um. Is for either a backhoe or a forklift that can operate. Basically off grounds in a gravel. Rather.
Okay, that's sure, uh, and would that also be able to be used or shared with other works?
For sure, yeah, yeah, um, nobody's inside of here, so we can share it if uh other works need it, we can use it for that. Um.
Yeah, this is public works, existing backhoe not capable of doing this?
So it is, um. I think there would be reluctance to provide the backhoe in case it's not there when we need it. Or in case it got broken, um, and it would be down. Do we need two backhoes? Probably not. So, I mean, there may be a scenario where we could come up with a way to. Do the work on the problem is, you know, it has to, it has to highway license, because it has to drive from where it's kept to where the training scenario is. That's the thing, we haven't talked about it very much, so yeah, I don't think.
We've got a new fancy trailer. We're moving the back of that round?
No, that's for moving the excavator and the skid steer, uh, that the the backhoe has a license.
It has a license?
Yeah, it has to be headquartered on highway with the the pressure light across the back. Um. We also, of course, have a forklift. Which is also, which is functional. When it's functioning.
Is it off road?
Brown. No, no, it's for finished surface only. Their forklift's quite heavy and the second you get that gravel wet, it just sinks. As we know all too well, so yeah, it's not all for a kit.
Um, is it a possibility with the backhoe? You know, I just want me to skid steer my, I think we.
Uh, just brainstorming right now, we would need to purchase forks. For your backhoe, from what I understand, because your backhoe does not have forks.
If it doesn't.
Uh, and then, um, if the skid steers. They, if you put the weight of a vehicle and lift it with the skid steers, the skid steers topple. Um, they don't have the little.
Why don't you two get together and see if there's another option?
Yeah.
For the sake of time, like, uh, that might just take that off line, so.
Uh, next item. Uh, you guys has a pentagon cutters?
Yes.
Okay, as uh vehicles get better and better, as they go, they're safer and safer. Uh, what that means is the the structures or the the cabins themselves, they're being encased in iron steels. Uh, or on, um, what we call tailored blanks, which are super strong. Uh, structures to to maintain them, all well and good for the patients and they have crumple zones and all that sort of thing. Problem is, they, if you're uninjured, great, okay, we can take our time, get you out. If you're injured, they're super difficult to get through. Our um. These uh pentagon cutters, uh, they have a higher cutting and sound strength. Uh, to throw some some ballpark numbers, to cut a bore, a piece of boron side impact beam, you need. Two hundred and seventeen thousand P S I pressure to snap those, uh, the boron side impact beams. Our current cutters go to two hundred and twenty one thousand. So we're just barely making it with the uh, the cutters that we currently have. The electric um uh pentagon cutters, they have a higher uh cutting rate, cut force, P S I force. As well as they're um. They're just more manageable, they have, uh, as the name implies, they're battery operated, everything is in um. In in your hands where you're using it. Our current cutters are a hydraulic system. That have a gas uh motor with a hydraulic pump, then we have hydraulic hoses, then we have um. The cutters themselves and they get maintained yearly, they get um. Uh, serviced yearly and they are great tools. We will probably get some trade in value from it. What I can say the trade in value is, I have no idea, but we will probably get some trade in value, so this price probably isn't what we're going to, but um. Uh, the reason for these cutters. They are stronger, um. Stronger uh cutting potential, stronger uh draws and spreaders, we want to get in the the future as well. Um, to deal with the modern construction of the vehicles and. The, as our current inventory, as we're servicing it. It's a gas motor, it's a hydraulic pump, it's not getting any stronger year to year, to year to year, so those brand new specs are getting lower and lower and lower. Um. And this is, uh, I believe, the way to go for um. The future um of auto extrication is all these electric tools.
Any, any grants that you know of for these or?
Uh, not that I, not that I know of right now, uh, we'll always research them for grants and uh when we hear of them. We'll jump all over them, but nothing that I know of right now, I thought, so. Yes, sir.
Question, oh, um, you you talk about the stronger materials, I mean, um, I'm a little confused, uh. I had the misfortune of owning a seventy two Newport. Um, which stressed the uh flatbed that took it away on its uh to its final grave. Um, that thing was a tank, uh, I I mean, my observation of modern cars is that they're tin cans, aluminum, you can open up up with a. With a with an X-acto knife, it seems to me, so we're, yeah, a can opener, yeah. So, um, how how is it that they're more difficult to get into?
So, the uh. Car technology today is incredible, um, we go through the AutoX every year, um. The uh, the the fronts of like. I think it's the Ford's. It's numerous, the engines are designed to uh front end collision where your Newport would have a solid steel frame rails. Solid bumpers, no, no give whatsoever, weighs like a tank. Bang, you get that, it gets transmitted all the way throughout the the cabin, you get to whiplash and. Hit the steering wheel, break your ribs, all that kind of stuff. These new cars, yeah, their bodies are tin cans, their bodies you can basically use a can opener and get open. The uh, the engine compartments, the fronts, uh, front ends, they're all designed to absorb pressure. So they they feel flimsy, they do that, the engines are designed to break off their mouth, go underneath the car and have the body go over top. The actual caps, the uh frame web, there's the A post, B post, C post, uh sill, um. Uh, the dad bars and then across the back of the C post, they're all hardened materials. Your side impact beams are now these hardened materials to protect that cabin. And um, what happens, well, you have doors, right? The doors open and close nice and easy, uh, because. The uh, the impact bars are in their uh, their structure, you hit that from the front, that door then jams, okay? And now you have a jammed little cell inside. If you're uninjured, that's fine, we can take all day to to cut you out and do this and that. If you are injured, maybe you weren't wearing your seatbelt, maybe there was a uh. Um, I don't know, a gallon of milk in the backseat that came flying forward when you hit and smacked you up. Then we need to get you out with a sense of urgency. And faced with those side impact beams that have now been in the frontal collision and they're slammed together, the doors aren't opening. We're gonna have to cut the beams, those B posts in the middle, there was called a tailored blank, and a lot of cases were. They're super um hardened steel wrapped with multiple, multiple layers of um. Different types of metal just to have that structural strength, so where your um, your seventy two. Car was a tank, yeah, I got a fifty five Chevy, it's tank, it weighs a million pounds. I don't want to get in an accident with that, I'd rather be my wife's out, that is gonna crumple and feels like um. Uh, tin around lightweight, but that Audi is gonna collapse, it's gonna protect that um passenger compartment, and everything else is gonna blow off.
So, let them up against your dog's ram remote.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, chief, thank you for that, uh, Councilor Abbott.
Just one quick question, on the bottom of the page on that one, you said, um. The like expectancy of these tools is plus minus ten years, you referring to the new elevators?
Yeah.
Not the old gas power guns?
The old gas one, they're in excess of that, there, uh, we have multiple generations of vehicles.
So how many, so you, do you have one, one cutter and one spreader? Or how many do you have?
Uh, currently?
Yeah, well, you know, if you got your new tools, sorry, I'm not adding the door, you have your new tools.
Yeah.
Um. Would you have one cutter and one spreader? Uh, or would you need more? You initially, so, I'm just trying to work out on this ten year lifespan, now often it'll be forking out fifty K, is it every second year? Or every third, or every five years?
Uh, so the amount that I put in for was thirty thousand. Uh, I've recently found out that the prices have dropped, this is last year's number when they were uh brand new. Prices for these have actually dropped, they're sitting around twenty two now, twenty to twenty two, um. Uh, so. Yeah, we want more, there's um. Our current inventory of hydraulic tools for auto extrication, we have um, there's. On engine six two, there's two sets of spreaders, two sets of uh cutters. Um, on our other truck, we have one set of spreaders, one set of cutters, so that's three and three. And then we have what's called hydraulic ramps, basically telescoping hydraulic ramps that are. Used for other evolutions in auto extrication, all these things um are now being built in electric versions. So. The bread and butter of auto extrication is cutters and spreaders, so that's where we want to start with cutters and spreaders and um.
We could, so we could reasonably expect you to be coming back every year on supplementals and as in trying to get a new tool.
Every year, once in a while, asking for more and more, and I I think, yeah, eventually, we're gonna like. Uh, a good compliment is a cutter and spreader, like, we're we're running two trucks, we're running the the many uh. F five fifty rescue, rescue six three is what we call it. They have cutters and spreaders and that, and then cutters and spreaders in our other engine, because multi-car accidents involve more than one car, so it's good to be able to. Uh, work um. On each at the same time and. Eventually, um, should budget, can I live with the hydraulic ramps? Yeah, I'll probably keep the hydraulic ramps, I'll ask you for electric ones, but I can probably keep some hydraulic ramps. Um, going for the times that we use those, but bread and butter, cutter, spreader, I would like two of each eventually. And I expect them to last for, well, plus or minus ten years, um. With this, like, I put thirty thousand dollars here. And I expect them to last for, well, plus or minus ten years. Um with this, like I put thirty thousand dollars here. Uh price dropped uh twenty two, I believe was the last price that I got. So cutters and spreaders, the pair, uh forty four, forty five grand. Um. Per year, if you can get them both, and then this year, the next year, we're done. Uh for plus or minus ten years.
Sorry, and they're electric, I presume they're a cordless tool?
Yeah, they're cordless tool, battery powered.
So by definition, like any cordless tool, they're gonna have a a shorter lifespan than than the old school hydraulic ones, right?
Well, it's not the um, the tool itself will uh maintain, uh we may need batteries here and there to to help keep.
But they're they're always a major cost, like sometimes you just buy the whole new tool, I I would expect, right?
Uh I haven't seen that yet with uh with these, I believe the batteries are much more, much cheaper than the actual tool. Like, like, ten thousand dollars for a battery and ten thousand for the tool.
Thanks, chief, for the explanation. Can you move on to the member housing, uh just again, sure, at a time, thank you.
So um we're having a tough time, as is everybody, uh with maintaining our um. Our membership, uh just because most of our members, we don't have the uh. The homeowner based supportive fire department. There's just that, I think, um we've put the word out consistently, time and time again, I think the public is well aware that we need um members. We have um roughly five active uh homeowner members. Not enough for a fire department. We rely on uh young guys that are just out of fire school. That are looking to come to us to get experience, they're looking to come to us uh to get um hands on the tools. To have the exposure while they're trying to get jobs in career departments, we're kinda, we're a training camp. Um and it benefits us, like it's, we don't have the people within our community to do the job, so we need others. And they're coming to us already trained, already, they've done their fire school, they've done their first day training, they're coming to us, ready to go, which is a huge benefit for us. Um but the career departments are hiring so many people right now that we can't keep our numbers, like we're getting. Uh rough, three to six people per year out of our school, back into our ranks, while we're losing. Eight, nine, ten here, so our our numbers are going down, and these career departments are hiring more and more and more. So to draw up more of these um, what I call pre-recruits, they're pre-career, but they are recruits. Um the biggest hurdle is, no nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two year old guy out of fire school. Or gal out of fire school knows much about Lions Bay, wants to come out the Lions Bay, and then the requirement is to live here. Away from all their friends, away from any restaurants or social activity that they were doing. Um wherever they're from, north fan, west fan, Burnaby, wherever. And it's a beautiful place, it's all an expensive place, so we have to find some way to draw the uh the people out here. Uh once they get here, we have a pretty solid um group of people. They spend a lot of time together, they have dinners together, they have, they work out together, and it's a great atmosphere to have here. And people like it, but a brand new recruit doesn't know it, and they don't wanna come out here, and it's really tough to get here. What this is asking for is some sort of way that we can give an incentive to get people out here, right? Get them over the, uh they're gonna be out of their social um. Network, they're gonna be uh subject to higher than rents in New West, Burnaby, wherever they may be. Uh so we're thinking if we can uh help them with. One, two, three hundred dollars a month for whatever period of time in combating their uh their rent increases by coming out here. Possibly we'll get more people out here. Um other departments are not doing this yet, so that kind of puts a cherry on top. Like, why would I go to Lions Bay if I can go to Surrey where the cost of living is a little bit cheaper and I can uh volunteer out there? Well, we can make it um at least the uh affordability a little bit closer and try to do that, so. We're we're racking our brains on how we can get more and more recruits here to come help us in this time of shortage. Will this last forever? Probably not. Um Vancouver Fire Department is the biggest department that's hiring quite a few. Last year, a hundred and twenty, this year they're on par for another hundred and twenty, next year they say eighty. Um and these are just numbers, uh fire school is only pumping out so many, and they're coming straight from fire school. Maybe here, maybe not, and then straight into um uh career jobs. So this is uh an effort to put a a cherry on. On top of our department and our village and get these people out here. And trying to trying to get them to come here instead of going else uh to Point Roberts or to wherever else.
What's the numbers uh right now and what's the high, I understand it was at one time it was up to forty plus?
Uh I think the highest since I've been here was sitting, I think it was thirty two. Uh was the highest when I've been here, previously me being here, it could have been higher, it could have been there. Um. We have. Our our total grand uh number. Uh I believe is twenty seven. Uh twenty six, twenty seven, I'd have to look at the roster again, I just lost four more this week, uh well, not this week, this month. Uh but like I said, some of those, they they're contributors to the fire department, they're members of the fire department. But they're not hundred percent, like um there's one member that does a great job in organizing all of our. Our gear, our ordering our uniforms, dealing and outdoing administrative stuff. He does that, does a great job, he comes to call when he can, but he's not really a a super. Um active member in going to calls and training other members, like homeowner members, just what I'm referring to. Um so actual active firefighters, we're down somewhere nineteen, twenty, um if that.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, um you refer to the exorbitant price of housing in our area, I'm just wondering. Do you, have you looked at, like, how do we compare in terms of rental costs to other areas? That these folks might choose otherwise, do you know?
Yeah, no, I I never said it was urban, I said a little bit higher, like it is, uh the North Shore in general is higher than um. You can go on any Craigslist uh home rental and look at uh. Um New West, Vancouver, uh Burnaby, uh Oco. All these other areas have rental accommodations cheaper than what is found here. Yes, there are some exceptions in every place. But we're looking uh not to. We're looking to draw people to us, right? Um and we're looking to help out in the areas where we've heard. The reasons why they're not, like, I've I've got nothing to do there, there's no, I don't know anybody there, there's no. Restaurants to sit at, there's no this and that, uh rents are expensive and um and I just can't do it.
So we're we're talking more about a cherry and to make something attractive that's otherwise unattractive, rather than saying that our rents are that much. Out of control compared to other places they might go.
I'm not speaking on rents being out of control, I'm speaking on the, what I've heard from pre-recruits, that's uh I'm trying to get out here. And they've looked at it and say it's too expensive, it's more expensive than where I'm at, it's more expensive than blah, blah, blah. Um so if we can help do that and give them a taste of the. The atmosphere that we have in Lions Bay and the camaraderie that we have in Lions Bay Fire. Then uh. We we tend to have um like very happy, very uh. Driven, very like great, great guys here, it's getting those guys here to realize what we have. Um so that's that's what this is to, this is to try to draw people when they have other options. And uh, you know, we don't have the base for the fire department, so we don't have the options, we need their help. And they've got lots of options, so we kind of have to draw them.
Few quick questions there, so um they have to stay in the village or within a certain distance of the fire, or what's what's the rule?
So uh if you're gonna be a part of the Lions Bay Fire Rescue, you have to live in the village.
Okay.
Okay, so that does not mean like everybody works somewhere else and that's just life, right? So Monday to Friday, nine to five, we are very short here as far as the fire department goes, because everybody is working. Um but I require the, when you're not um working. Stay, come back here and contribute. Um the uh. The motivation for that is, you came here to get experience, you came here to go on calls, you came here to train. So come here and stay here, and I um. I ask the members when they're not here, let me know, so myself or uh one of the other captains who tracks these things. Gets a phone call or a text when, yeah, okay, I'm out of the base, and we keep a kind of a running number of who's in the bay. Outside of business hours when we understand that everybody kind of works, so we try to keep uh a core here, and if um. This side of the room says, no, we're gonna go and we're gonna do this, that, and the other thing, and then this side of the room says, hey, uh I I wanna go to uh. Caulfield to go shopping, I'm like, hey, can you hold on like half an hour, cause uh Carl's gonna be back? And then we'll do this sort of uh for Australia, they'll they'll do that, so we try to maintain our numbers as much as we can through that sort of thing. On the weekends, we broke into fire department into uh four shifts, in B, C, and D. And the shift starts Friday at end of work, six o'clock, and then ends Monday morning, six AM. If there's a stat holiday, that gets added at the end of the weekend, and whatever shift is on that weekend, they have to stay here from. Um six o'clock Friday night till six AM Monday morning, there there is no leaving, so that keeps us with a a crew here no matter what. Um so yeah, that's kind of how we're functioning.
Okay, um. So I I was a little unclear about this, but I think I'm understanding a bit as you as you speak, so this is really, like a bit of a sign, but honestly, you're talking about. Six months, two, five hundred bucks, two, three grand sort of incentives to come here.
Yeah.
Um and the five guys only get paid twice a year anyway.
Thank you.
So would this be an upfront payment, so they'd get something in the beginning before they get their first six month check, is that the idea?
So uh similar to the backboard discussion that um. Uh Mr. Burr and myself are gonna have. We can have further discussions on how to dole it and how to how to pay it. Um but we're look, we're looking to broaden our horizons on uh or our options to draw people. Uh if we decide on triple this amount, we can do A, B, and C, and D, if we decide on half of this, we can do A and B or whatever. And we can work on the details.
This particular, I I I get there is in detail, there was one more question, but but this particular idea is upfront payment, we're gonna do it for the first six months.
It was, and I guess I like.
And then af- after that, then hopefully they love the atmosphere and they're gonna stay.
Yeah, yeah, so is that fair for the guys that are already, I don't know, that's that's the discussion that uh. Um we can dig uh dig deeper into, but uh the intent is to uh make. Lions Bay and Lions Bay Fire Rescue more appealing with these guys coming out of fire school, because they do have options. And uh we require, uh we need them a lot as well, so that's the intent with this.
Okay, all right, chief, that's great, can you uh tell us a little bit about the support, please?
Again, so like I was mentioning, all of, there's a numerous reasons why uh I've put this in. Um. New fire trucks, our current fire truck, uh one seats eight people, the other seats ten. They don't do that anymore, unless we wanna buy a custom chassis, uh sorry, a custom body and a custom cab, of which the price goes through the roof. It doesn't do that anymore, so this uh cut back to four or six, depending on which truck we get. Um the N F P A standard for a minimum structure fire uh response is sixteen people. Well, if we have uh an eight seater fire truck, which is our newest one, that is an eight seater. And then a six seater pumper, we're at fourteen, we can't get our members there. Okay, so we need some sort of vehicle to show them um carry extra people, so. Uh we can use uh the mini, put extra people in that.
With the mini?
Uh sorry, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh so we'd be showing that back and forth, but our first line proves, if it's a hot fire, we're going in a pumper truck. Okay, so that's one of the reasons for this. Secondly, I'm going to warn more calls um. In the best way to expedite and every fire department uh will run. Um battalion chief, a duty chief, uh whatever rank, but he's the the head of the ship. He will go to the incident, do a size up, and then call the play as trucks come in. Right, okay, you're coming in, you're taking the higher, you're coming in, you're doing this, essentially come up with the what's called an incident action plan. Uh that's done it, everything from uh structure fires, attack rescue calls, the wildland fires. To motor vehicle accidents on the highway, so it's not limited to just structure fires. Uh in my personal vehicle, I've been playing this role, I can only play this role within the village, cause it's side streets and I drive. Go to and go free straight to the incident, uh aren't out of the way. And call it in on my portable radio as uh trucks are are approaching and coming in, and this is the game plan. Can't go on the highways because I don't have any flashy lights, I don't have any um anything that can permit me. To block traffic on the highway, or my duty chief, or one of uh the ship captains that's gonna play this role. So having something like that that can give uh the IC role. Um. A vehicle that could is uh useful for transporting people that can be taken to emergency incidents instead of uh an IC role. Uh and then this just happened yesterday, there was a uh another medical emergency in the village. Where the B C ambulance crew requested that uh two Lions Bay firefighters go with them. In the ambulance to administer further care uh on the patient as they're driving for free. Well, who has to go pick them up? I do, right? So as. They're going down the highway, I'm driving down the highway, they go and pull over, put their lights on. And do more administering the first aid in the background, I go by to the next exit and I'm sitting and wait, sitting and waiting. Sometimes um I don't wanna get into the details of the incident, but. Uh the person's um status was okay, and then crashed, okay, then crashed, okay, and then crashed. They need the firefighters, they don't, they need the firefighters, they don't, they need the room in the ambulance, they kick the firefighters out. They put an ALS crew in, they don't, all all these sort of things, so I'm kind of. Falling, being in close proximity to pick these guys up, to bring them back to the bay. Turns out they got taken all the way in the Lions Gate Hospital with the patient right into the ER. Um before they got released, I picked them up in my own personal vehicle and bring them back again. Uh so it it's an added um. It's an added reason for this resource. Now, the fifty thousand is maximum. There is uh. Um other. Other options, I believe we could probably come up with this vehicle for a lot or somewhat less than that. Uh but I can't guarantee that, and I'm looking at auctions, I'm speaking uh to this before. I'm speaking with other fire departments that are getting rid of uh emergency vehicles. Uh usually they have to pull out all the uh emergency equipment and then send it to auction, and then you get a fraction of what it's worth. As in the the case of our rescue six three, that's over a hundred thousand dollar vehicle that was basically gifted to us.
Team brain, was it, wasn't it?
Uh that it needed some uh some work to customize it for us, but yeah, yeah, it was, it was, it was a gift. So can I guarantee that's gonna happen again? No, of course not, so that's why the fifty thousand is here, will I be looking for that? Yeah, I I've uh, there are other options out there that we can get it, um but. This here is uh is put forward to describe the need and uh put some um. Like an upper limit, and I'm gonna try in all my um. Uh capacity to come in with something that is much less acceptable, and that fills.
Let, all right, chief, thanks for that, any questions?
Yeah, quick question, so your uh idea?
Yeah, quick question. So your uh idea, it sounds like what would be ideal is a uh a crew cab truck. I mean, you've got sixty-three up there. I took a look at it. That's a nice uh F five fifty Triton.
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind one of those. I I I mean, you talked about gear and the need to throw it somewhere where it doesn't de- uh contaminate other stuff.
Yeah.
So i- in 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 many cases, or in how many cases, would would that one not suffice to to do the job? It'll transport your crew? And of course, this would all become a moot point if we stick with the uh ten-person fire truck for longer, then we've got the capacity, right? Then we don't need that extra capacity. So I'm just wondering why that one can't fill in and do that duty.
Okay, so uh the ten-person fire truck is the point four-year-old one.
Okay, yeah.
That's kind of off the list. The um if it's a motor vehicle accident, and that truck is coming with the resources, and we're not gonna like, if um myself or the incident commander is gonna go to a call that that truck is gonna be dispatched to as well. If I come down to the fire hall, get in that truck, and then I take it just by myself, now I'm just taking four seats. I'm not have to call any sooner to come up with the game plan. Um it's more advantageous to instead of go to the hall, park my truck, get in that, take that truck, and then the rest of the people get to the hall and don't have a truck to ride in, don't have the gear, don't have um uh all the the needed tools to to go forward with it. If in the case we're having to go to Lions Gate Hospital to pick up the personnel, again, that's um a resource that's got all our tools on it. That's got, do I wanna take that out of um the response capability of Lions Bay to drive to uh to do Lions Gate Hospital to pick up a couple of firemen to then come back? Or do I wanna leave that here should a second MVA or rescue or incident come in for them to take? So the um, yeah, I think the best case scenario is a quad or crew cab pickup truck, where we can put uh contaminated gear that's got gasoline, smoke, whatever contaminants on it in the back separate from the cab, but yet still carry four, possibly five people. That'd be the best case scenario. Next scenario after that, uh an SUV or event or something. So, and that's um that's my answer.
All right. Any any other questions for the chief? Okay, Chief, thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time and of course, we value your efforts and and your hope themes. So thank you very much for walking us through that.
Thank you very much. Any questions uh before, feel free to email or uh call or whatever.
If you'll come out. Emergency response. I understand, I think you've got the emergency response program uh that has been risk assessment, the ESS directors request. So thank you for listening.
Yeah.
And and sorry, um uh Mr. Blackwell has asked.
Just uh we could just provide just brief, subtle, subtle, little bit of everything. Yes, very brief. I think last time I came, I gave the long speech and he said it was shorter.
You did.
So uh a few things, uh the emergency program coordinator increased uh ten thousand. What what's happened uh this year with passing of the legislation is the province has downloaded a lot of um responsibilities and activities to um uh municipalities or local authorities. Um a lot of the meetings that I've attended, uh I've been screaming, small communities, we need funding. We can't afford to just hire full-time people. Uh they've listened to a certain extent with regards to some of their uh funding that they provide, provided for First Nations uh consultation for risk assessments and that. So they're starting to listen, but I I'd like to get a contingency uh in place until I can actually get funding through UVCM grants. So I may or may not be able to get this this money in grants. I I don't know what they'll provide us with, but I will try to get this funded. But in in the meantime, I think we need to have a contingency uh to to cover all of the activities that they require of us. And I just listed some of them here. Some of them are required by legislation, but other things that I've been doing outreach uh to different um uh different emergency agencies. These are the relationships that I've been building over the last year to try and ensure that we've got help when we need help from from other agencies and other communities. Uh but the big things are um responding to the the provincial requirements for uh the legislative changes. So the risk assessments, the uh upgrades to the um uh the emergency plan, these types of things are gonna take a lot of time, a lot more time than than before. And I think it's, oh, and then time and preparation for the UBC grants as well, like that uh takes a lot of time. It's not my specialty, and I'm hoping to be able to draw uh Joe down the end of the table into that as well too, but just takes time. So in the end, I'm asking for the increase. I'm hoping to be able to get uh funding uh where possible through UVCM, but there's no guarantee of of what the province is gonna throw our way and that. So that's, how about I cover all three?
Whatever you wanna do. You'll do all three. Any last question?
Uh go ahead. Why don't you run through all three and then we'll.
And so the next one I had on here is for the ESS director, uh an honorary, and I'm I'm proposing a twenty thousand dollar honorary honorary for um middle ground, who's our current ESS director. What I've been able to look at over the years, I I listed the rationale and what she actually is responsible for, and this is like legislatively responsible for. It kind of surprised me a little bit. Um Mary's obviously doing all of this. So I think, you know, when I look back at the village and I see uh people who have done ESS in the past, what's happened is it's become a much more formal role within within uh the province and the responsibilities to to ESS directors. It's no longer just showing up and, you know, feeding people when they need it. There's a lot of training. There's a lot of provincial meetings, a lot of regional meetings. And more training and more training and more training. Um the other thing that uh I'll mention about our current uh ESS director, she's also uh cross-trained. So in the event of an emergency and we need to activate our emergency operations center, I would call her in on that too. So I'll leave you with the rationale to have a look at that. Um I don't think there's anything else I needed to say about that. Um the last one is funding for a hazard or risk assessment. Uh this is uh a requirement of the new act that was passed. Uh they're they're in the process of getting the regulation out. I've spoken to a couple uh communities and other emergency program coordinators, uh one in Delta and one out in uh the Fraser Valley. This is what they've had to spend to get a consultant in to do this risk assessment. Uh obviously, a lot more than thirty thousand. I think Delta went at about fifty or sixty thousand. But I'm guessing that because of the smaller village, less uh fewer uh risks that uh we'd be able to get for thirty thousand. Uh after I put this in, uh I saw uh UVCM has got a funding stream that would potentially cover the cost of this. Um so again, there's no guarantee that we're gonna get that. So I'd I'd like to have the thirty thousand in in uh contingency, uh because it has to get done, and this is a key step into the uh revamping and updating of our emergen- uh village emergency plan.
Okay, uh any questions for Phil?
It was a little distracted there, so I was looking at the budget. Um the change in some numbers on the lately. So it actually had been shown that you were gonna underrun this year, but I guess we hadn't paid the final invoice. Okay, so but so these are the final numbers for the year now.
Yeah.
Okay, because previously, the previous report we got, it was told that you weren't gonna spend your budget this year, but you had done. Okay, so that answers one of my questions. Um and and just a few, you know, I give a rate change, this is just more hours, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Um any of these things you listed, do you get any compensation by anyone else in any of these?
No.
And I I want to jump out, he was the co-chair for the regional emergency planning.
No, this this was um I had reached out to our mayor. This this came up a few months ago, where uh the chair, who was uh the emergency manager for um uh Metro Vancouver, had to step down, uh and the chair became available. Nobody was taking it. Um the reason why I sit on this committee, again, is to reach out to other resources and not have to recreate the wheel with either policies or resources, shared resources, that type of thing. So the co-chair became available and uh I I was nominated by uh the manager there. So no, I I sit and I represent Lions Bay. I haven't always been compensated for that, like I don't charge the village usually for that. Um so, yeah, no, I I represent Lions Bay, and actually I just uh sat on subcommittee of uh the R N P C is is what it's called, and we had done a study for transportation and the transportation in the snow issue that had happened and what the outcome of that is. And I, in the credits, Phil focuses on Lions Bay EPC, I represent, and I'm not, I don't get any funding from anyone else. Thanks for the conversation.
The 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 emergency plan, particularly, you know, when I say next, the evacuation plan that we've been looking for years, is that gonna hap- happen this year? Do you have hours and time to do that with this workload?
Yes, and um uh actually, uh I'm planning a um a session in early March uh for the community. I actually just sent that to uh I think I copied you, Joe, and and sent it to uh CAO as well too, as to when that's gonna happen. So yes, that is gonna happen within the budget that I have.
Okay. The risk, hazard risk workshop, um report you have to do. You know, really, we have a very detailed natural hazard assessment, right?
Natural hazard assessment, the act actually stipulates exactly what needs to be done. A lot of things have been changed
But.
for the risk assessment.
Okay, the 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 natural hazard assessment we had is pretty thorough document. I don't know if you've ever looked at it. Um and I and I think it might be my, I mean, I'm assuming our biggest, our most common risk are natural hazards. And I I know we have like this trucks and highways or whatever. Um and I think that could really have a report might already have done, I mean, it was a comprehensive document, particularly when done on call, for the mayor. Um we should, we should look at that when evaluating this, because I think we might be able to shortcut there, and please don't double or duplicate effort.
Agreed. I I've seen reference to it uh when I was doing some uh research for landslides and potential landslides. And I saw reference to it. I couldn't find it. I've asked for a couple times, and I don't know where it exists. But but again, it's inside. My expertise to be able to evaluate
Right.
the actual risk. I mean, if they stipulate what the risk is, especially in different areas of the village, then yeah, it could be used for sure.
I think if someone is estimating this and you gave them that document, you might you might find out that there's a whole of hours they don't have to redo. Um and then my um my last question was uh on I don't know, I think you answered all. Um no, it was about the EOC cross-training. So that's, so she's taken that course on her own initiative, but I don't understand.
Yeah.
Um and it's gonna be EOC qualified fairly soon. Um but, but she wouldn't, in an emergency, she wouldn't know.
We needed ESS services, no. Um but and we do have some EOC training brought uh for later this month, so we'll have our other volunteer Fred, who's who's volunteered to to get trained up as well too. Um I think the the key is is that the kind of like fire, we're not always in the village at the same time. So we need to be as ambidextrous as possible. I didn't ask her to be, uh but she took the courses anyways, and she's uh she's made herself available, and she realized I can step in the ESS and she can step in the EOC. However, we need to do it based on whoever's in the village at the time. So she uh, you know, this requirement, I think, is is a a good one to recognize the position of the ESS director. Uh I think it's especially important to recognize uh the current director, who seems to consistently go above and beyond every time. She shocks me with what she does and what she'll be able to do for us in in the event of an emergency.
Okay, um just one last comment. So we we've only had one EPC meeting this year. You know, I've been asking for one over and over. It would've been great to have an EPC meeting, whether we have the time in this budget cycle, get some time and dive dive into some of these details, and if you've got a recommendation from, maybe it would've been, you know, probably a little more well, not helpful, but a little more effective.
Did, just the way, did did I hear you write that uh in March, you're gonna have an evacuation plan for us, or?
In in March, we're gonna have a, uh I'm planning a um community session where we've got, uh we'll introduce not only the evacuation plan, but I've got uh secured uh a gentleman from Bowan Island to come over and discuss their neighborhood emergency uh plan that they have in place. Uh so that's part of the emergency plan, is to have our neighborhoods uh do more for themselves and copy their program from Bowan Island. So that's um that needs in front of me there, but I can share that.
So so you'll be submitting a a draft evacuation plan in March?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions for Phil? Phil, thank you very much. Appreciate everything you do. Uh okay, the word over you, and uh we've got an extensive list, so I'll let you run through that.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll start with the big one, which is the highway temper person. This would actually, if it was to proceed with council's blessing, be a three-budget commitment. Because in order to make the difference that it would need to make in time for becoming water shortage, would need to start very much immediately. Meaning well before the budget is approved in May or April. But the number uh remains as it is. It's a guess at one million dollars. I'll remind council that uh I don't know where this twenty-five thousand dollar number that had been budgeted twenty-three times from, because I recall the number to be a hundred thousand. Had been budgeted by council last year for pre-design phase or the design phase. Um you received today, if not on table, the letter from uh the proposed engineer uh that under, that gives an understanding of their design fees for the project, and the number is we haven't seen it, thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is significant for this at a hundred thousand.
That's designed to the back.
That's the one.
Yeah. It was previously one hundred.
It was previously, it was on page four of their letter. Plus, now that's the pre-design. And then uh the the detail of the construction services, I'll have them to undertake the actual delivery as well to be owners' web and to cope the project. I imagine that would come in around when I'm extrapolating, uh sixty to seventy, not a hundred. But then, of course, the thing has to get built. That number is not gonna be known until we get beyond this thirty-eight thousand dollar number, that would give us a scope. Oh, we have a design done by you still? No, no, the only design we have for the highway tank is ADCom's original concept, which was replaced. So. There was a, there was a tank, two P O Vs, because I've seen those. Correct. And so the work is is somewhat done. They are proposing not uh a below-ground compartment. They are proposing a above-ground kiosk, which is half the price. Um the last time they did a double PRV, and don't forget that each of our PRVs is actually two valves that time, one for fire flow, a four-inch valve, and one for potable, which is two and a half inch valve, and we need two of them, because it's two pressure zones below here. The last time they did one was forty th- uh four hundred thousand dollars. With its design well done, well, I mean, mostly done by ADCom six years ago. That's an excellent start. It's almost certain that we would not go with a break-in tank. I want the additional flexibility of two PRV stations, so that we could play with the uh pressures into the two pressure zones. As the pipes deteriorate, we can, we can maintain fire pressure. Um be that, that that's detail on what it would look like. I'm just telling council now, that you know the the uh the outcry that arose when we put three above-ground kiosks in already. This would be another above-ground kiosk, but it would be tucked around the corner, not in the public view, not on a street. It would not interfere with future plans for the space, um which I'm pointing at. But there would be a fairly sizable kiosk there. These guys, Corolla, say that they think that the kiosk But there would be a fairly sizable kiosk there. These guys, Corolla, say that they think that the kiosk would be six feet high. Not the ten feet that we see in the in the current kiosks. So I'm just alerting you to the fact that this would be piece of municipal infrastructure. Why? Because to make completely subterranean will cost much. So I'm asking for a million. I think we can do it all well inside that. The problem is that money to be of any use as we spend now.
Quick question, Carl. Yeah, if if, do I recall correctly that the last P R Vs were at about three hundred seventy five apiece?
Yeah.
And so we're talking about two P R Vs here and the elimination of the break tank.
We, yes, it was, no, no need for a break tank.
Right.
The cost would have to include demolition of the highway tank.
Okay.
There's one small additional complication when that tech was built, the land belonged to us, now belongs to highways.
Okay, so here's my question. Why can't one have a combined single P R V that handles both zones? And presumably there'd be some economies of scale in that. So now we're looking at twice three seventy five and more presumably because costs have risen. I think that's what I'm trying to get at is is the cost of the demo. Like, what is the cost of the demo of the tank?
Twenty five thousand, not much. So I can now.
So if 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 a single P R V was three seventy five, couldn't we get a, is it possible to get a dual function P R V, get some economies of scale? I mean, how much more would that cost?
It wouldn't be double the price of one, that because the control, the control system would be the same control system. The kiosk would be the same kiosk, the side grid would be the same side grid. So if if one costs three seventy five, two would not cost twice that.
So presumably, let's say we're another fifty percent and we're looking at twenty five, thirty thousand for a demo, then we could hopefully come in significantly under a million.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that something you're looking at?
Uh, the timeline.
On multi, you were saying we don't know.
Oh, that is details, but it's an additional complication. We we need license of occupation now, which we don't actually have because when the tank was built. Harvey Creek can already catalyze and they have expropriated the land for their channelization works.
So that could take some time before we get even.
Yeah. Again, that's why I I like these guys because they've done this before. I am not getting much traction, but they will.
So to the combined P R V again, is that something that has been discussed and getting some economies of?
Yeah, I mean, for every pressure that you need, you need a separate P R V. So we need four. Because we need two sizes for each zone, one for fire flow. Because we're obviously done, you know, we're not, we're not running that level of water at all time. So the 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 potable is set at a certain pressure and the fire flow is set two or three P S I below that. And when, when they open up the fire hydrant, then they both kick in. And that's just economies on on. Yeah, the function of the valve, actual P R V, that valve, you need still be four, but I think what Mark said, you could put it one bigger box with. It's gonna be one box. That's gonna be one box and and the most important, that's one of the main reasons I I need to do this is because I need a flow meter. Now, I need two flow meters that at the appropriate place. And are you still convinced this is one of the places we'll be potentially losing all of the water? Or is there any way to confirm that? Can we do some sort of test that really creates further? That is, I I had hoped to provide that impetus today. And actually had them looking at the numbers. We pulled a whole bunch of numbers day before yesterday. Lo and behold, I have this continuity between the numbers for flow rates calculated using tank heights versus numbers calculated using flow meters. So we're in an emergency program to the flow meter is either miscalibrated or the height meter or both. And I mean significantly, I don't mean it's sort of ten, fifteen percent, I mean, hundred percent. It, you know, it's, it might be, we, right now, when I calculate the flow rates overnight using the tank heights, we give the number that's essentially equal to the entire consumption through the flow, through the flow meter. So I'm I'm about twelve hours ahead of you and I will get those numbers. Because the entire ask to spend this million dollars is predicated on tank heights. And if the tank height meter is wrong, well, then that sends the whole thing away. So I mean, I. So if this is a big, it's rest of mine to somewhere else, we should be changed. Okay, so I've done some. Maybe this is an I C meeting, I don't know if we. This is, you know, the council has a technical meeting, but, you know, this is now. Here, here are the four zones that I can discriminate using available metering and and careful calculations of slopes and flow rates and so on and so forth. I'm pretty confident in two of them, that is using modern flow meters through P R Vs. So there's greens on, sorry for the the lack of, but it's just a greens on, it's a, it's a, it's about eighty houses. The leakage rate that we've calculated through that zone is seventy nine thousand gallons per day. We're also pretty confident of. And next to the Lions Bay Avenue. No, that's that's up big.
The lower is one twenty six.
Ten to ninety six. One twenty six, so you're on. Yeah, so the one twenty six is predicated on the tank heights. If the tank heights are large, it it might be part of that. Which means that we need to spend a million dollars elsewhere and I know what that number is, but I don't have time to do the double project. That is the mid, in the lower, lower than your road fringe. We don't have time to do that before July. So this may, yet even if we find the numbers are not quite right, this may still be our best option. The other zone that I know quite a lot about is all of Brunswick Beach and the part that's that's normally fed by magnesium. There's a leakage, overnight leakage of about ninety eight thousand gallons a day. Our boxes are, please don't spread that around because it might as well not direct pollution. So. Okay.
You need, you need more data before we can.
Well, I can say that this is, I can put my head on my heart and say this number is real. If it is, or even if the number is slightly different in terms of the actual leakage zones, we still need to do the project. Do we need to do it this year or not?
Mr. Ver, we've got all items, the power.
Yeah.
I'm glad you ran through them.
Okay, that was the base.
Any point question?
Yep.
Regarding the Northern Lions Bay area, that was replaced, how long ago? Fifteen years ago?
Two thousand twelve, I think. That's the power. It's the power. Yeah. Power, yes. But that's what we're assuming. It's not the five, it's the ten. Anyway, so that's all. You must hope that one is on. Yeah, and there are still stubs there. The stub that goes to the south, that's the original cost line. Is it? Six inch line. I mean, we know very well that we have pipe leaks, but most of them are in fact not in the mains, they are on service lines. And when we fix a service line leak, we can tell them available metering, because we have a lot more than we used to through the new P R Vs. Each one is about thirty five thousand gallons a day, every time they get a spot. So if you do the map on that that map, you will see some of the rivers are under three or four weeks and we're done. So I have to find the best ones. We are going through a massive program. Very spent the money, sorry, for a new type of acoustic leak detection system.
Okay, Charles, we got four items.
Okay.
Five minutes an item, that'll give us an hour.
All right, some of them will be quicker than that. Any type of drainage, this is a perennial problem. Council, Albert probably knows more about this than I do. It's a drainage project that's that's been on the list for a long time. I'm saying that we need to do it now. We are just, we know from inspecting the culvert and and the the drain last time by crawling through it. It's gonna get to the point where if we leave it much longer, it's not gonna be an intrapagerary number to fix one, it's gonna be multiples more, it's gonna be two or three times more. This is gonna involve watch outs. The number is five hundred thousand. And we must go through, down and like in this particular one, we're gonna crawl through. Okay, yeah, sportwood. But typically, yes, you put a crawler down there. And it's an old C S P code, yeah. So we can't find this or anything, never.
No.
All right, also there are railroads. And then down through the beach.
Any questions?
Okay, the next one should be very quick. This is just to get that number back on the budget. A hundred percent go off under the red, it's the clap. Up except the bill. The number is four ninety nine, that project is ongoing, but it's a new bu, new year, new bud. So I'm requesting that council re-budget, I think it's the accounting speak, that we enter all or roll over.
Yeah.
All right, roll over today. Do we, do we get the the breakout of these two projects first and last? We need to take forward and reach for, spend today and as a new as budget as well as? And then again, yeah, every, this was every damage. Okay. Okay, connector project including wayfinding signage, the processing of thirty, detailed report on this related to do recently from some white label issue here. The number is four twenty nine, three thirty three, of which we find twenty five percent. This is with a committee of citizens right now to scope or rescope or potentially not do at all. But if we are gonna do it, it needs to be on the budget and that's what this is all about.
So four twenty nine is the gross.
Four twenty nine is gross, yeah. That's hundred percent, of which we find twenty five.
So it's a one oh seven exposure to.
Yeah, of course, we showed the drawing in our revenue number, our top line number, so we need the corresponding spend.
We should, right. But in terms of impact.
Now, I don't know, I have not yet been sold in by this this task force, so I don't know what thinking or plans are. I've provided them some collateral and maps and stuff. But that's all I know. So whether the recommendation will be to go here, there is a time constraint on this one. If it's not done by thirty first of December, it's never gonna get done, because that's the end. That should be lived. All good? Um, this, no.
This one thing has to be done by thirty first of December this year.
Yeah.
Finished, completed.
Finished, done.
Any expansion allowed?
No, there was extension.
Okay. And they're offering a project manager.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. There's one small wrinkle without naming names. The project manager they've tapped is the I prefer to, one of the three names of the selected engineers in the highway tech project has not responded yet despite three promises to do so. So I don't exactly know how assuus that will be in their role as project manager. We would also have, it would also have to come out of the project budget.
Given where this is at, how likely would you think it would be that this could be completed by December?
Oh, very likely. Really? It's not a lot. I I don't know what the scope will be. I suspect it's gonna be a new bus shelter. At least that's where I'm, I'm advocating for, quite a big one, that we double as school bus shelter as well. Whether or not we need it. So you know, there's work to be done there, but that that's in the hands of other levels of government at this stage. Okay, so let's move on to the mag wear intake reconstruction. The mag wear is is a problem child. Some say that it's cursed. It's currently blocked, it's it's often blocked. We want to rebuild it in direct emulation of the Harvey wear, which never blocks, which always runs. It's a very reliable, so on and so forth. The way that mag was built when when it was designed and constructed, they have what they call separation building, which essentially is designed to screen out rocks that come in at the where small rocks, centimeter sized rocks, which it does very well. They connect in a ten by ten room underneath the ground with a two by two hatch that you have to go down and empty with bubbles. We haven't done that for a while, it's almost impossible. We want to abandon that building by putting a raceway or a launder or a screener or something in the open with these rocks will drop out, we can pull it out the machine. Will it cost three? You you might be surprised that that budget number is three, 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 that's the indicator that that's somewhat of an estimate.
How much of an estimate?
Pretty good one. Corolla is looking at this, they're extremely excited. They've already jumped the gun and started talking to people from Switzerland and other places with steep mountain streams. This is a a number that we think will get, there's not a lot to be done. I know what we spent at Harvey was two eighty for a complete rebuild. This one is. It's a little more difficult. It's a little more difficult because of full size and and so on and so forth, but it's smaller.
Would this include a sand trap?
No.
No? Wouldn't that be a wonderful thing to do? To provide some some simple mechanical filtration?
At Magnesia, it was called the infiltration chamber. It lasted one heavy rain. Or it popped completely. It's now lying in mangled pieces on the side because we haven't had time to pull it, pull it all the way down and out.
So if standard is not feasible?
Just because of the nature, this is a steep mountain creek. In fact, I allude to it here, why it freezes, so nobody's asking me, so I'll tell you. It's because it's mostly froth in the pool and the foam freezes quick because it's mixed with cold air.
So that's, that's the one where you guys primarily are, or the guys are, where the crowbar is breaking and all free.
Yep. Now, will this save us any water? No, but it will save a lot of time so we can go and find leaks. It's another fairly discrete bite size, well defined, easy to do, design it, build it. I've looked at the videos and the photos from Harvey, it shouldn't have taken more than three weeks. I'd like to do it.
How much staff time would it, would would that save?
Oh, two to twenty eight hours a week.
Twenty eight hours.
Two to twenty eight.
Compared to twenty.
Yeah. Which is very often O T or double O T. So that's, that's the rationale to do it this year is because we need the time. There's some resistance about the saving to O T, I might add, but this. Okay. That's another one. Reach back to us. This is a perennial project that's been going, it's funded, I just need it carried forward. Only hundred fifty thousand was funded. Everybody knew at the time that that was just the first down payment on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar program. That's what's involved, I gave you the diagram. The proposition is to use a preferred vendor to do the concrete bridge to see what we're in for, to see just how bad it is. So that you know, the way that all of our in-village road bridges are constructed is the concrete girders with a concrete deck and asphalt over the top sitting on two abutments. Between the road base and the concrete girders is a gap that's not filled with anything but dirt right now. Preliminary inspection indicated that water was getting into the rebar in the concrete deck and eating it. How far back? Don't know. If it's any further back than the depth, that the girdle is over the edge of the abutment, the bridge falls down. So we kind of had to get it through pretty quickly.
Was what occurred across creek a patch or was it an actual prepared?
No, that's a patch.
Because it's already eroded.
Yeah, no, there was hot, there was hot springs and.
Yeah.
So it all would be going in there as well?
Yep. Yep, we have to do this project. To save some money, what we. Maintain it next time. So yeah. Do the maintenance next time. Yeah, well, we have done some maintenance, but the, too late.
Yeah.
So I have a, I have a very bad feeling about what's, what we're gonna find, but we have to find it. Because the ground bridge is falling down and they will. Once the rebar is beyond the edge of the abutment. Okay. I'm hoping you're reading the financial implications or had ready to read. Much like the bottom of tide water, this is the bottom of mountain. In the culvert set is another failed, now in this case collapsed culvert. So Mr. Mayor, in this case, I don't even know if we can get a robot through there. It's certainly not gonna be cool with this culvert because it's collapsed. And and if you go to the end, Martin Collins, you will see it, you'll know exactly where the collapse is.
This is where on mountain?
The culvert's up right at the end. Yeah, there's another ditch line for it, it's followed underground drainage. So install was what happens, where's where's the water flowing? It was shown here. Into the ground, but it's not washing out over the culvert. No, it's because we are so permeable, it's going somewhere. When we relied on that in other cases, like here on lower Ocean View, it flows into people's houses, so which is why we're concerned, there will be pipes and stuff in the way. I mean, in a place like Lions Bay, you have to get the water not into the ground, which is the usual practice, you have to get it into the drainage creek as quick as possible, meaning line culverts. We have some differences in opinion between culverts and ditches, but.
To get it into a ditch would suffice.
No, it depends on the ditch, how the ditch is designed. Most ditches are are designed to then populate the water into into the ground.
How big is that sinkhole? It's a sinkhole, I think.
It's about six by six feet, maybe a little bit bigger and about six inches deep. We've been patching it.
So not as dramatic as the one on the switchback on Bayview some years ago. And and to the ditches, one that enters a more natural water source that say now is 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 downstream of houses, then we're okay.
Yeah, then that goes to the ocean and we're fine.
Which presumably, this, this is on a dead end and it would then head for.
So from there, it goes down into a river creek.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's actually a. Called it through the concrete wall, right, of of the.
Yeah.
Going down, we know what is coming.
Yeah, that's good to drain it to ground.
Somewhere.
Somewhere between Martin Carl's sack and that pipe, it's going somewhere. There's four houses below there. I haven't heard any. Um, Q W twenty four dot A. Um. This is scada. A scada is, I I sent council various notes on this over the course of of the last year in in terms of. The lucky escapes, the post calls and so on and so forth. Scada has to be updated. Our most important challenge is, we have to get a little more where our leakage is. So we can go and fix it before it becomes a problem, especially this summer. To do that, we need flow meters. To do that, we need to redesign scaling UI, user interface. And we need to update some. E L C's programmable logic controllers, because they are low support. We did just upgrade the operating system from version eleven to version fourteen, skip to view. Um, stopped working for a day because. The vendor, Rockwell, had never seen this stuff ever before, and so they thought we were scanning our lessons. So we had to get something to go in manually and update our lessons first. This is quite fun. Um. Yeah, but so the main, the main thing here is to make the scada a little more powerful. And real time. The ultimate uh goal is to. Make it a little more controllable from a control room, not as far as as motor actuated wells, although we have some of those in the plants themselves, but not, not in the. The in field. What I do want to do is trial some inline chlorine meters, the new P O Vs we have activated about.
The one in the mountain, that was the whole idea.
No, it's this, it's diagrammed about, it's automated. I mean, it's spring on. It's got, it's got two pilots and it opens when it needs to. Notice that it's not, it's not controlled by anything.
Hmm, okay.
I get to be, but actuated valves are pretty expensive. Um. In fact, the actuators, one actuator at the plant has just died. And we're giving a quote on everyone, but that's at the plant. So the point here is, uh, three inline chlorine meters. So that we can start comparing the results that we get midstream. Um, with with our hand samples. Why? Because in order to be absolutely sure that we have residual chlorine at the end of the networks. We're probably overdosing a little bit at the top. Uh, when I left the office, we were at point nine eight P P M chlorine. The national standard, if there, there isn't actually a Canadian standard, this U S standard that we're due is point two. So we're running five times chlorine that we need to at the top. Because we're not sure what it is at the bottom, especially if it's a weekend or a long weekend, when we might not sample for four days. So in an abundance caution, we kind of, kind of go heavy on the chlorine, and we get complex.
Hmm.
Especially if you're close to the park. So this is all by way of just bringing us slightly more into one here. So. A hundred thousand was funded last year, but it was not spent. Um. There's a little bit left in our maintenance budget, and I'm asking for another. Re-jittering of other spends. I'm asking for another hundred and five. Kind of again, because it has to be done. And here's my.
Would that help you reduce the chlorine at top of it?
Yes, so, so, thanks, yeah. So there's, there's two main benefits, both necessary. One, really time critical. First is to reduce the chlorine, so that we can reduce it safely to get the overall dosage down. And the second is to, is to find leaks, is we'll put in three clamp on flow meters. I probably should have pointed out that in the two P R V zones that we want to put down to replace the highway tank. They will have flow meters too, so it don't give us an additional discrimination in the network, so we can start finding. Knowing where to start finding parts of leaks. When we have water flowing through a meter, as we do now through the upper bay of Bay of P R V and Pixie. We can actually see it. We can measure it to, you know, the nearest five thousand gallons a day. So we just fixed one the other day that. Not before wipes out on this driveway, unfortunately, I think I mentioned this before. That was thirty five gallons a day. Well, that's, that's quite a lot.
Thirty five gallons a day?
Thirty five thousand. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that, again, unfortunately, service line. We've seen a lot of service line leaks um, in winter, especially after a cold snap. And of a certain air valve that was put in with polybutylene service lines, not copper, not P D C and not PEX. So poly B is. I believe insurers ask you if that's what you have, this.
Tonight, there.
No, that, so, and then what we, so again, there's a real time suck, because you know, it takes us a while sometimes. There's, there's still forty curb stops we can't find. They're, they're under tar, they're under a tree, they're. Uh, but we know where most of them are. We switched them all, and all this is in the leak stop, so we know it's on the service line side. It's not on the municipal public side. But now they're out of water.
So, who lays, you laid out this plan. Does anyone sort of give you a a review or a backup on it and let us say? I like this, this approach, or?
Which, which plan?
Uh, the the tasking, to try to detect where these leaks are and things like that.
Zone metering, uh. We've been asking for it for fifteen years. This is zone metering. This is, yeah, what's necessary to put zone metering in. Uh, until the advent of the, of the two P R Vs that have been commissioned now for about two years, uh, two and a half years. We only had two flow regimes, either the back tank and out of the, sorry, not out of the tank, because that would be really nice to. Into the mag bar and into the hybrid part. Those are the two flows. That's how we knew how much water we were kind of consuming. So we've really got, yeah, as, as you can see here, I can, I've really got double that now, because I can look at the slope of lines and work out where that's going. It's filling this tank, not filling this tank. So we need this scale work to. You know, to focus in on where our leaks are, because one thing is perhaps with yours, leakage is gonna get worse, not better. The pipes are all moving a little bit more every year. And at a certain point. They're gonna spring moderately. We need to get there before they spring catastrophically. When I say pipes and in mains. The service line stuff we can, we can handle. And and you know, this is line space, and we do that as a favor. We shut off the curb stop. Uh, we shut off their house's isolation valve, and then we put sanitized line uh, between. Their house and the neighbor's house. We're gonna do the negotiation, so they don't have to leave their house. Because. So the one, this thirty five thousand gallon one, they spring the leak on Monday, the plumber can only get there Friday. They were planning on moving out until he said, oh, yeah. Don't need to do that. We'll disconnect it to your neighbor's house, which is one benefit of non-mated water, by the way, and don't be minds.
Even if we had, we can make an exception, not bell assets.
Okay, so that's the scada one, and this is in. Oh, yeah, I said here, the lightning strike of summer twenty three almost hit us in. But I was, was it not for the, the, the kindness of. Our friends at the municipality of Burnaby. We wouldn't be having this conversation.
Is there a way to protect from that in the future?
Yes, uh, we.
What did it go?
In this budget, in this hundred, this two hundred and five is. Restraping the ground straps to a grounding mesh for the last piece of pipe before it enters the, the, the intake pipe between the plant and the intake. Before it hits the plant, because we think what happens is the lightning strikes around up there and it puts ground potential in and it runs down the pipe.
But lightning won't strike twice, right?
Hmm. Okay, uh. We have multiple. Water main and drainage projects under grant application, this D M A grant, which I'll remind us all is the best part, ten million dollars. Uh, gross project costs. Um, so I check in every day or two. But it's always under revaluation. I think that's not everything.
Um, but they haven't, everyone's flown the valuation. They haven't given any.
I have seen some announcements of funding that sound suspiciously like D M A grants. In terms of the terms that they use, but they don't say that it's the M A grant. So I don't know. I've certainly not seen any explicit announcement of D M A grants. Their F and Qs don't tell you anything. But we will hear when we hear. Whether or not we get it is another question, but we need shovel ready plans. This is one of them. We have multiple plans in prior years, and I've asked for them to be part. I think they're about. Two point eight million dollars. One of them was press the button to start the construction on Creek View and Highview. What I think I want to do is to have all of these plans ready before we start construction. So that if we do get the grant, we can hit the ground running, and if we don't, then we can do it in a big. Economies of scale of the project. So that's what this small one is. This is a design for the one remaining piece of puzzle.
But we can add to the the D M A application, can we?
I would like to believe that because it's such a long term grant eligibility period, ten years. Then they will allow some flexibility. Once we've started the design effort and. Realized, you know, what we asked for there is not.
My point was this, this is more important, or, or things change. Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I just, I was wondering if we could get the highway tank on it, too.
Yeah, I mean. It was very specific years for the three projects we had designed at that time. Yeah, so I mean, I listed them here, um. There are two other projects, the main drain on on Highview, which the design was budgeted eighty and the construction at a hundred. Which, as I say in my notes here, sounds very low, even though it's a very short piece. Um, and then the main, four hundred and fifty meters, I did acknowledge that, to be honest. Um. And then main drain on on Reef View, same again. So those were budgeted and approved and not executed. I'm proposing to part those. I will keep very close track of the fact that those funds were previously approved. Um, but we need to do the one missing piece of the puzzle, hundred and fifty.
That's gross net, and that would be a hundred?
Uh, yeah, it is fun, if you want, yeah, the fifty would need to be carried forward, yeah. Yeah. Um, this is the right rail rebuild. It's a, it's a straight in and out, fully ground funded. That doesn't need to be on the budget. That's why I put it there. Uh, it's start is imminent. Signs are already up, project signs are already up. Anything more on that? Yeah. Uh, and this, I think, was almost, almost the last one, and that is the um. The beach park. Now, since I submitted this and I've been a little lax, I didn't submit the jetty. Requirements. That's only been done verbally or or supplementarily. I had asked you, remember, for a hundred thousand for the jetty. Um. I subsequently met with for sure that it was the preeminent for sure engineer of B C. You've seen his, his letters in this on table. His costs alone, design costs, that I'm funny to design, but they're to. Reduce the necessary penalty to alleviate any objection on other levels of government, so kind of like an entry fee. Uh, um. The the necessary spending to get this project crew is cost alone of forty three thousand dollars. At the low end of the retained engineering, he would have to break.
Is it the jetty?
Yeah.
So forget the hundred.
Forget, I, so I, I subsequent, I told you last few days, one night, come on, you know.
I'm rebuilding the jetty. Just remind, what do you, how do you come up with that?
I'm like, well. This Scott Christie's educated guess. I I didn't want to press him too hard because the contract would just.
That's his guess, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably be wise to build a comfortable contingency.
Yeah, it is contingency.
Yeah.
There, there's wrinkles here, because you know, obviously you don't want to be ripping up the beach park five, so it all depends, it's predicated on the rest of the beach park project. Happening at the right time. Um. There's more to it than meets the eye. As I alluded to last week. This would build up the beach so that we wouldn't have to sling sand. This is a project that over time will pay for itself over a very long time. But we don't have a cash flow issue. I mean, you know, the, the money's in the bank. Whether we pay for the thing over ten years or one year doesn't matter. You're not convinced, I can tell.
The money in the bank, right, yeah.
I I still another time being related with this project, you know, my sense. Maybe it's not part of this conversation.
Okay, so that's not in my subtle mental, what is in my subtle mental is this uh, plot. Again, amazingly, it does not pay for itself too, because. Um, of the now complication of not being able to pull it in and out using uh, marina resources. Um. We would have to do it ourselves. We don't actually have the resources to pull the current dog in and out. I just can't do it. This one, we can take the fire by ourselves, but that's all the public works. It's a much nicer and safer thing. This guy, Buck Christie, has. Told us about a much nicer boom design. That's made out of thirty six inch polypropylene pipe that that sits there. It's black. The kids like to sit on it because it's nice and warm. That would take the place of the log boom, the anchoring thing, where we already sorted out how the anchoring would happen. So this, this baby costs uh, fifty thousand dollars, including all anchoring requirements and the polypropylene pipe. And pays for itself.
So, so this is H T P pipe to replace the existing log boom and the dog.
And the, like, dock looks like this.
Yeah.
Replaces the flood.
Yeah.
They are screaming. That it will last ten years in house sound. There's one bone that has. I don't know how sheltered that is compared to our exposure. But now, with with this addition of a polypropylene pipe. I'm pretty confident this will stand up to our conditions.
And the poly, the H T P pipe will be permanently anchored.
Yes.
What's that deck made of, just out of curiosity? Is it like a fiberglass or?
No, plastic, but lots of plastic out of.
You, you want, we'll take a look at those, because I, just a side note, I know I was up in the Okanagan, they have this type of a. System. I don't know if it was the exact one, but it would shed. Fiber slivers. It was really awful.
Oh, really?
But I, you know, I have no idea if this is the same, but.
Oh, well, I, I want to, because the agent is actually in the Okanagan.
Oh, really?
The local agents, but based in the Okanagan.
Yeah. Um.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure this is.
It was like it was, it was a, a mesh type of a dome that you could see through.
Uh, yeah, that, that is fiberglass. I, I know the one you're talking about.
It sheds stuff.
Yes, no, that's fiberglass. Okay. No, this is. Uh, less slippery when wet, uh, sunproof. Kids will love it because we could even have a slide, but I didn't specify that just. Uh, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what that's about. It's, it's ancillary to adjunct to, I don't know what it is, to. The jetty requirement. I'll just reiterate with the jetty. Is almost a vital project. If we don't do it, we'll lose the jetty and then we'll lose the beach. The jetty project has the two benefits that we will not then have to remediate the more. Because the waves will be greater further out. Why? Because the beach will be shallower and we won't have to send sand that often.
So can I ask you a question again about the jetty? Have you, you had budgeted some money for like previously, the jetty or the waterfront?
I never budgeted any money. There were twenty thousand budgeted last year for the ball remediation.
Uh-huh.
That's all.
Okay. Um, now, I remember this Christie saying that it qualifies as pathway. And the reason I ask this, and not to take away from the connector project, but. If we have to spend money on that jetty to preserve that beach, that may be part of the hundred and seven. That, that would qualify us for the remainder of that translink.
It's certainly a five percent coverage.
Yeah.
That would be first prize.
And and the reason I say that is because, uh, Ross, I think it's all enough, Christie, before, I think, we had, well, you. And he had said that the jetty and anything on the waterfront is definitely pathways, and and he felt that it would qualify as a translink. So just throwing that.
Well, we better hear from TransLink.
I'd like to run it by Consejo as well, yes, but. Okay, it's with the next.
That's right.
Let me do it last.
That, big ask, good ask.
Yeah. Um, yeah, well, we have to have a separate discussion about the connector project, because you know, it's right that. I'm not dealing with it right now. I'm not calling it translink, uh, even though they would like to know what's going on. They did ask, yeah, et cetera, et cetera. Um. Well, perhaps you should. I suppose it's a good question. Yeah, yeah, this is so ancillary, yes. Okay, and then the last one was um, side by side, um. I'm not gonna go on about this one. Uh, there was three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars budgeted last year. Uh, to remediate the mag access road, which those of you who have taken to it know, is in, is in. Virtually, totally impossible state and really valuable territory to walk in and run to.
So we're just looking at a cheaper option now. But we're gonna let the road go?
Place other options.
Yeah.
We're not gonna let the road go. I am hoping that discussions with other levels of government come to fruition. To remediate the road, which is now a major regional hydro disaster. So until we get to that point, they say yes or no, we need the Kubota to get us up there without ripping the trucks pieces. The plan would be to park this Kubota at the mag plant behind the gate, under a roof.
I can tell you too, Carl, with those seventy cent Kubotas, they come with attachments, including plus no valve.
It's really a power, so I I know that. The guys are not very excited about the ability to apply, but there's no sidewalks with this thing, but I am. Um. It's, it comes with windshield, uh, cooler, um, coffee maker, um, everything taking heat. Those are all add-ons, of course. That's not included in the total.
Salt, it's very, they they spread the salt as well.
Yeah, I mean, you can see it has a little thing at the back and you can carry things in it.
Well, we're not looking at twenty five before I know those bells and whistles, right?
No, uh, that twenty five doesn't do the uh windshield and uh side project. So just no wheels.
No coffee maker, family.
All right, well, it's actually the extra, yeah.
It looks something like this, yeah. We get an orange to match our excavator and our skid kit. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Carl? Sure, there'll be lots. Over the coming weeks, but hanging right now. Oh, okay, uh, Mr. Black, anything you'd like that?
Chancellor Abbott had a number of items from the Infrastructure Committee, or did you want to touch on those now or? Okay, so there's nothing in the Infrastructure Committee recommendations. The call hasn't mentioned already, look. Although he's mentioned additional things, except the pH control. Oh, right, pH control. That is on here. A hundred thousand.
It's in the budget price.
It's in the first round. Yeah. There's no USA from England.
No.
Some construction to make stuff.
What is that all about?
Well, maybe our people often then never can say the rest. So um our water is slightly acidic. That's not good for a number of reasons, both mains reasons and leaching lead in premises. We don't use lead in mains, but many houses in lines where you use lead solder with copper. You will remember, because I know everybody read the uh water report cover to cover. We were required to put in a layer from coastal hell, warning of the dangers of lead leachate. We want to increase the pH, that means make more alkaline, um. Just because it gives better mouthfeel, it gives slight better color, better taste, and it doesn't mess with the metal in our distribution network and in houses. To do that, there are multiple ways. Um, if you talk to the cavalier amongst us to pump on a drum. Uh, how that gets needed, I don't exactly know how it interacts with the skating system, I'm not quite sure, um. All the way up to and including soda ash towers with augers and compales and slurry makers and all kinds of that. Which we need, which we probably don't either. Um, the guys. Are reluctant because handling caustic soda, um, so hydroxide is dangerous. It's can't get it on you, but. But you do get it on you. For those of you that are blind or caustic, you know, it's it's makes your skin very slippery and then that's just before it eats your skin away. Um. It's a difficult. Project, but we have to control the age and we will soon be ordered to. Do we do it this year? Yes, maybe, um, because it's a bite sized project we can give to somebody. Hundred thousand dollars, uh. I I think we're more than covered for two plants. Most of that would be integrating of the the metering pump that sucks the pot of caustic soda out and puts it in the stream. Integration of that, uh, skating system. I kind of want to use this hundred thousand as part of the scale of budget and the fact that there's a pump on the end of it, it's just a by the way. So that's what that was about.
So we're gonna be drinking caustic soda?
Well, it it'll be barely detectable. You're you're drinking chlorine right now.
Yeah, I enjoy that part too, yeah.
Um. And so you didn't put it on. Your list because you didn't.
I did put it on my list, but it is in the budget, yeah.
Oh, it's in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's on this list.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will discuss it at that time, okay. Alright, so I mean, the rest of this report, which is the project calls go about infrastructure, we spoke about them. Came over there with, they thought the top six was, doesn't quite align with exactly what Carl's now saying. But it's just, you know, I'm assuming everyone's read it. I'm not going to go through it now.
I'll just say the difference between when this was originally discussed and produced by the committee and now is that we now know that we are in for a difficult summer.
Yeah. We're gonna run out of water this year.
If we're ever gonna run out, we're gonna do this this year. And I'm not gonna let that happen. So we we have to. Uh, address leakage like now.
Have we looked at uh any other options? Should we run scarce on water?
We're trucking water at that point, aren't we?
Trucking, it doesn't help. Not have a currently interest. We run straight into the ground. No, well, yes, I have a contingency uh in in the in the core budget.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty six.
Thirty six.
Thank you, oh, so do more than us. Um. But that is, uh, that's signage, communication and and as fundamental as um. Cozide barrels of non potable water that people use to dip out to replenish their toilets.
Also, I forget Carl, I meant today to discuss feelings. And Carl's going to. Have a conversation with Metro regarding to scoping the potential for extending water service. See if that's a viable option, not a viable option, et cetera, just to give you some more data.
Good luck.
So so this has been known before, huh? Not the first time we've asked based on this question, right? And we've got the answer this, I think you're gonna get it yet.
Well, we never did have to get a price and we would not push the button on it until we got a handle on leakage, because then you're paying, I don't know. The last time I looked at the price was ninety cents a cubic meter. Well. At that price, uh, we couldn't afford it because we'd leaked sixty percent of our water into the ground right now according to current numbers. With the proviso that maybe our leakage number is completely wrong, because the tank light meter is only going to be rechecked tomorrow. But, uh, yeah. We, again, we don't have a supply problem, we have a distribution problem. We have to fix leaks and then we can start talking about supply.
Well, we 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 will have a supply problem, even if even if we immediately.
The summary is gonna be tough.
Yeah. And we'll likely continue to have a supply problem. Because we can't fix all leaks that quick.
Until we fix the living here. Yeah, I mean, the miniature palace is gonna have at least. Fifteen percent or sort of, that's, if you can do fifteen percent, we'll do it fine.
Yeah, another challenge.
We do a hundred percent.
We reduce the snowpack, to your point, a lot of this is where you're going, but it reduced snowpack, which is with climate change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And hydroelectric dams not running because reservoirs aren't full. Yeah, so we will have a supply problem.
Oh, exactly, yeah, I mean, so that is the point of the U V C study, I'll just remind you, is we're trying to understand the breakdown between surface and subsurface flows. And. When there is no more surface flow, how long before the creeks stop running? Because water is coming in from the groundwater. And they have some pretty good ideas on how to do that. They've already done some isotopes studies to say, see how old the water is that that's coming down the creek now. And and there's some indication that the groundwater flows are pretty good, but. How long will they do that before, you know, the last drop at the intake level? We don't know. So that's what the U B C study is is all about and and there's a budget request in May.
Seven thousand.
Yeah, so there's there's a significantly more than we've asked for before, because I actually need to put. One stream of flow meters in the streams themselves to unassemble the streams today.
And we should expect that the subsurface flow will also be affected by lower snow packs in general.
Maybe it's a four year cycle.
Yeah.
That's what U V C is working on.
Yeah.
There is also, and there's somebody, it's also a scenario of like. Can rely on screens as much as you can, and if there's some viability. To connect that, to to connect to the metro's water, we use that when.
Or peak shaving, yeah. You would replace your existing water, right? Same with desalination, it wouldn't be. All of our construction, it would be to peak shave.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's from a, from Metro, which will also be short on water.
That's the problem. That's the problem with the pipelines, when we're short, they're gonna be shifted.
Sure.
Right, smart girl. Okay, anything else, Carl?
But did you cover the infrastructure committee?
Well, I think, I think so, because I think we spoke into it and just to support what you've said. So the ranking changed somewhat, I was just going, it was, this is a while ago.
I can just run through the rank.
Well, the I C, I C's, the I C's ranking one to six, they they came up with, um, region repairs was number one. Right, um. Come, we've, we've now moved into an operational budget, so I think we've. What counts is effectively detected that.
What, number two?
Number two is the highway storage thing.
That that's awaiting more data though, right? As whether it's the first place.
Even though. This time tomorrow. Which numbers to believe and others to remember, as a supplement to the budget question, yes.
Yeah. Um. Making intake rebuild was the third one. Um, which we discussed. Um. Fourth priority was updating the scaler. Which we discussed and has been budgeted previously and I need to talk up. Um, the fifth one was um the two small wooden wooden replacements.
So I already thought that, but I realized that we still need to know what we're facing on. What should you place?
Actually, no, the I, so the I C committee didn't come out, our decision, I C was. Go do the small one, the ninety meters on Reef View place. Because we wanted to do a border main project, that would give us some idea of what we might be seeing when we start to do the longer ones. That's, that's, that was I C's recommendation, just go do that small one. So we've done any replacements, the shortest piece we've got. Um, and it's gonna give us some some data for what we're facing on the line.
I'm not versed in that approach. The only reason that I didn't want to do it is because I've already got nine projects. And this one would be handed to. The designer, the engineer, and they would, they would run with it. The way I would, but because otherwise I'm standing at the side of another hole in the ground, making sure that they put the pipe in the right direction.
Yeah, there you go.
Were you gonna touch on that project?
And then, sorry, and then the last one was the pH adjustment.
Yeah.
And if anyone, if anyone wants more idea, anything more about the pH adjustment, we could invite Tony and Tony can only speak for five minutes.
Um, then you'd be here for a while, but.
But you could come speak to council, explain the risks, um.
Is there health risks?
Is a health risk.
Yes.
Longer term.
Yeah.
Um.
And this is largely linked to the presence of lead solder in in which copper piping in households.
Somewhere, yes, yeah, yeah, in in terms of that aspect of it.
This one is big. That's the health aspect.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, and that's why, you know, at the school, for example, they'll leave the, suppose they're on the edge in the morning before they need to be in the water.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, that's your best role.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how many of us do that in the household, certainly not in mine.
There's your water leak right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the schools are playing in the summer. Um, no, that's on the ice.
What about the uh?
The C A, the C A C stuff, um. So we roll this, we put this into the budget, Joe, the C A C stuff?
Um, so the.
Let's do them one at a time. Okay, so we'll do one of them. So the first one is. Um, the fuel. Um, first, the oil first on the whole. So that was one of the C A C's primary goals from the very beginning, and it's the number one. Uh, issue that they've been trying to get done. It's the one, it's the one, number one climate action missions, um. Put into the, actually, we would do in the village.
Was that covered by a a grant already? Was there?
No, there's no specific grant to do that. What we have is we have the L G cap grant, which is fifty one thousand dollars a year. Which, did you find out, Joe, it rolls on past the third year of twenty three?
Uh, uh, L G cap, it's a guy. Gone three years and then it's.
So it was, it was all that for three years, it it replaced the previous.
Carrot.
Carrot money, um, but the problem is always with something in place, and I'm pretty sure this is either gonna get extended the past three years or they're gonna go give it to us another similar thing, and I think they're gonna start these kind of grants. So we've got at the end of this year sitting in the bank a hundred and seventy thousand, sixty thousand, whatever your number is. Um, and it should, we thought in the original estimate that that was enough to be able to do what we were wanting to do was to get the oil. Um, burning furnace out of there and get some heat pumps in.
A hundred percent grant?
No, the L G cap.
Yeah, we would be, we could use the money for.
We can use the money as you choose, yeah. Yeah, we use the money as it chooses. Um, I mean, the origin, in the version you got yesterday, unfortunately, went to the old file. Um, we thought B C hydro upgrade was going to cost about thirty grand and it's pumping in there, but we could all move all next year. The problem is we subsequently, and and this number is a bit inflated, someone been told by another um electrician that can view the site. But he believes the two hundred amp B C hydro upgrade is gonna cost us a hundred and thirty thousand. So now we go from a project that we can actually afford, um, to be one that we can't. We need another, literally another hundred and thirty. So that's kind of where it sits now. So I I think we go back to the climate action committee, um. Next week, we get it next, whatever the next meeting is. I think we're gonna modify the ask to, we move ahead this year, finalize the design, confirm the two hundred amp power. Um, is gonna cost us, whether it's gonna cost us fifty or or a hundred and fifty, um. If it does turn out to be under the hundred and fifty one thousand, we're at a hundred and sixty thousand with these cap money we already got, you'd like to go ahead and do the project now. If it doesn't, um, or at least we're patient, if it doesn't, then um we'll roll it over another year.
And then, yeah, we use tap into the gas tax reserve.
I guess that's a council decision. What do we see the gas tax being used for? So the gas tax money, we have to spend this year.
Next year.
Next year, and we have six hundred and.
Seven hundred and sixty four thousand.
Seven hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. So that's a council discussion. Could we chop this up? If we chop this up with something like that, and then we get another. Kind of cap grant, this, this, or another L G cap type grant, this is a pair of other things we need to do. We also want to do, replace the whole windows, get them doubled raised. There's, there's, there's gonna be many uses for, climate uses for this money, but we will be knowing the projects. It's not, it's not fine, we won't know what to do.
What other options are there besides repairing this building?
Other options for.
Uh, climate. The use of, the, what other projects could we spend the money on? Just out of curiosity.
Um. Well, there, there's been various suggestions, there've been suggestions to put solar panels on the roof for this building. Um, there's been, and there's, the energy, sorry, envelope upgrades, I've spoken about cheapie windows, but there's more that can be done. Well, we've got the fuel thing kind of sorted out, so that doesn't take care of that. There's been several asks for, um, you know, moving to electric equipment. Um, in the workshop, uh, there was a council resolution that actually said when we come to replace municipal vehicles, we should be looking at electric. Um, we haven't actually replaced one, but that's not too far away. Um, and I'm not sure if that's gonna be like for like in dollars or what other driving factors they're gonna be. Um, those are the ones that. Come immediate sort of mind.
Whole range of things that could be, could be involved in this.
We need, we want to do the, committed to do, we just. And then.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it's a good one.
Without trying to get to taxpayers and get any more money. Um, from taxpayers, um, and this is the part in using grant money we receive.
What would our pollution risk insurance premium go to regarding the water? Should, is I believe all the cars.
Uh, are, well, I mean, that's not a question, um, that, uh, you know, we need to discuss or we need it or not. Uh, so it would be currently, you know, premium over a three year period is six thousand dollars a year.
That's around, yeah.
Six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, we're gonna place it for, we're out of renewal, it's about twenty grand for.
And that's all related to the oil, I think?
It's a a underground, uh, uh, accepting, like anything, it's third party liability, basically, anything, we're under our, um, uh. M I A uh insurance, we're covered for uh pollution that's on municipally owned property. If it's spilled over to non municipally owned property, we're not covered. So the tap on for the pollution coverage with, um, uh, instead of company, um, Aon, uh, is that. Uh, to uh ensure municipality, if there is a pollution event. Outside of municipal owned land, that's covered by M I A.
That said, I've asked Joe to follow up with that, I need to see if there's any writers or any other provision that he may offer to deal with. Uh, the offside question, because if that can translate into saving.
Twenty thousand, I'm pretty sure council would prefer to allocate that to, like, the projects.
Upgrading the airbrush service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, in terms of the windows in the hall, right now, there, there is double glazed, and then there's space, and then there's, um, um.
Those things.
Sorry, I said first big surface?
Yep.
No, I don't think it, I think they're, what did you say?
They're double blue.
Blue spikes. You know, uh.
Obviously, second.
Um. Protection from bicycles.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But the, the outside windows are double glazed, which we've done a number of years ago.
Many, many years ago.
On a hydro grant, yeah.
Many years ago.
I think the seals are.
Yeah, seals are gone.
Yeah.
Seals are gone.
Yeah, they were, they were checked out, they're not working.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, so the other one is, um. The VC recycling program, so we get not only twenty-five thousand a year, but less this year for some reason.
It's in the, it was in, uh, it's in the numbers to be in there.
Yeah, it was saying this, anyway, around twenty-five thousand a year. Um, because we joined the VC recycling program. We obligated to spend five thousand of that twenty-five thousand. Um, on, on educational. Things around recycling. Or environmental, we have to spend that much money. The, the balance, it's kind of loose of what we, we use, we can use it for. Um, the climate action committee wants to use. This money to. Set up a mini recycling program. Not only the workshop, we've discussed that, we call this, these are what that looks like. Um, and the suggestion is. Um, we are already open at certain times of the year. Um. On, on Saturday mornings, and we open early on a Friday, but this is more focused on the Saturday mornings. Using that same window, um, putting some recycling containers down there. Um, for the stuff that can go in the blue bin. So the big target is soft plastics. And styrofoam. But also batteries and other kind of things, all those kind of things. We spoke into waste collection services as well as another contractor that was going, that, um, Claire knows that. In her industry, in foreign industry, that does this kind of stuff. It's a really nominal cost of about. Three hundred dollars a month, both of them came up with the same number. And case of waste collection services, that's just to come out, it's going to just be like a tube bed on another truck. And it will just kind of, it was swapped out containers away, it's set up. So it's normal, but, but it also needs is, we're going to make sure, we're going to have to make sure we open year round. Um. We want to extend it for more than three hours, um, and I know, so, uh, this little report, it just basically says, well. Assuming that the staff read doesn't fall. Half of the year, and you use part of this budget. For the other half of the year, um. That's where they came up with this, seventy-five hundred dollar a year. To fund staff it. Um. It was four hours, not three, sorry. Um, four hours on Saturday for the six hundred. Um. So this would total, if, if we split the cost of that way and call, we have to talk to them, is that, does that make sense? Or, 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 or you do you have that already funded somewhere else, we don't have to use, fund it out of this, I don't know, that's kind of. Uh, Joe, financials, but if it was considered in that light, we would only spend thirteen of the twenty-five. We still got another ten thousand dollars coming in. Um, through this recycling program, um, which we did, um. Target other uses for, recycle it.
That's bad, terrible. All right, any questions for, uh, councillor?
Uh, put this a six month, probably like there, smart.
Um. Well, we, we already opened, we, well, I guess that's not strictly accurate, because you open for other reasons as well now, right? Um, but that program and the need to be opened during the summer was something we initiated. Um, with bear issues. And, and made sure we open every Saturday through the summer, not only when you need to go for something else. But that's been in place for quite a while.
Yeah, most of the time we are there anyway, uh, because on Saturdays we are doing pipe checks, because the garbage was almost certainly to full on Friday, but we don't know that until the checks are coming anyway. Friday, we're there anyway, anyway. Um, I'll just point out that the recycling center is not quite the same level of effort, because. You know, we're not standing by the bins, making sure that people are throwing the right thing in, whereas with the recycling center, you have to. You have to check on the paint, is, is the right amount of paint, and the batteries are going in, the. The mercury battery goes here, and the CFL goes there, and whatever it is. So it does have to be manned by a fairly, uh, industrious person.
Mm-hmm.
Those of you who have gone to the old short examples, or burn a bit of those, um.
But so in a, in a, in a quick, what you're saying is we should really fund the additional man hours completely out of the.
For the recycling center.
We have to be there again.
Okay, so you can take that out, then, but even if we double that, um, we'd still have, uh. Two or four thousand dollars under the twenty-five. We still have enough money to do. So yeah, so basically, we, we didn't look at it that way, basically, the money we're getting from, from recycled VC. We're going to turn into. Service for the village that a lot of people have asked for. It's going to keep a lot of, a lot of people throwing soft plastics and styrofoams in the garbage, we noticed. Right, um, because they're not that many people actually bothered to drive, pile up and drive out to, um, transfer station. Just, that stuff all going to the, ends up in our oceans, it's, it's a big issue.
No, yeah, but doesn't it increase our, 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 uh, our waste costs, because they do audits, to the audit?
They expect the load, yeah.
Yeah, if they expect the load, yeah, they're supposed to audit, it's a good point, they're supposed to audit this program, audits. Supposedly everyone once a year, but I don't think it's going to be that frequent. Um, and they, they go and speak one of your garbage loads, and if there's a bunch of plastics and recycling. Plastics and stuff that get recycled in there, you get deemed, and then if you don't meet the. Is it? Ten percent contaminants?
Mm-hmm.
Don't quote me on the number, um, then they start to fire you out of this front.
Yeah, then they start going back.
Or maybe twenty-five.
So we lose money.
So we lose money, so once they order us, we're going to probably find we're guilty, and we're going to lose money, if we do this, we're going to protect ourselves, again. The other thing that, um. Rather than waste collection service pointed that to us, the other thing that we're going to try is. I don't know if anyone went to the transfer station, wow. Year and a half or two years ago, that was, and they were asking you to put your plastics into two separate plastic bins, did anyone experience that? Anyway, I arrived, two piles of plastic, I piled my garage, I eventually got out there. And I got there and they wanted me to put the laminates or the crinklies, they put them laminates in one bin. And then soft plastics in the other bin, and I had them all, just the way they normally do, these bags of, bags inside bags. So I sat there for an hour, didn't even need them, sorted that. Cause most other people came up, were just, uh, this and whatever, and throwing it on the ground, and didn't want to participate.
I put in my garbage, that's right.
I put my garbage, that's right, there was a go, so they cancelled it. At, at the transfer station, they stopped doing it, and if you go there now, back to the old, they just mix them up. The problem with mix, once you mix the plastics, just gets burnt. Gets burnt to the piney cement plant. So it's. Unagreed, in fact, they burn it for energy, and, and, well, they use energy, save other energy on making something.
Waste to energy, all right.
But if you separate them. And I'll be, we're me along, if you separate them. Right, and they can recycle the soft plastics. And when we, waste collection service was suggesting to us, if we could prove that we could separate them as a, but now, because we're smaller community, and we do that. They would probably give us, the recycling program would give us more money back. It'll be a separate kind of funding, that's why they were trying to prove in Westland, but it didn't work.
Okay, any questions for councillor? Oh, okay, let's block on anything before we move over to. Uh, Mr. Chirkoff, are we going to get him to walk through any?
I don't know. Well, thank you, no, uh, you know, I, I, given the hour and so forth, I think that the intent tonight's been that, which is sort of back, back up the duck truck of. Information on the supplementals, um. It's now, well, with, since with council, this sort of. Go through all of this stuff, it's part of, to the, as you can, figure out how to prioritize this stuff. Uh, question I would add with council is. Would council feel that there's value in having, um, Phil and Barrett back for the deeper dive into that discussion, or? Do you have enough to work with now, that's one, the second thing is. There was one other matter that I'd like to bring to council's attention, but. It would need to go and come into, um, closed tonight. Very briefly, but it's something that's rather important and budget related.
Okay, um, so you're suggesting, suggesting that we move on, other than we have a closed item that you'd like to touch on? Uh, and you're saying that would be brief, any, any questions, any thoughts about, uh, adjourning the meeting? Uh, moving to closed?
Well, we're going to adjourning the meeting, we're going to give a reason for closing the meeting.
Well.
Hey, change the agenda?
Moving into closed and, and then.
It's, it's, you don't need to change the agenda, it's the same topic, it's just a sensitive, yeah.
Some said.
Yeah.
It's a closed item, but yeah.
I mean, it could be an open item, but I, I would not recommend it.
Right.
But it's part of the same topic. But, uh, if I can get feedback on what other council would like to have, uh. Like the back of the tables or in, available for a deeper dive. Next time we're not, how would we?
I just do options, we either, we either have them come back and we throw some more questions at them, or. We send emails or give them phone calls, set us, sign us aside, do that individually.
Or.
Precisely.
Yeah, or we, we talk about it and then see if we need them and need to waste their time.
I was thinking, certainly, I think we should have, we should have run it on our own from what they've told us.
Yeah.
Um, maybe come up with the. The preliminary, the movie list, which might not satisfy them, and then I guess you go back and say, by the way, we're planning on giving you X, Y, and Z. How do you feel, and even more, more plans, I think, but I think we need to have a discussion about it, okay?
I, I think, uh, from the start side, I, I would like to know. Where the priorities lie, because we have three funding options, we draw from reserves, uh. Untagged reserves, not, not previously taxable reserves, or debt. Uh. Or taxation.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because, as I did to last time, the, the initial taxation number you've forgiven us, that's just for starters. We now need to raise additional funds.
But we also throw a fourth on there and defer. Uh, I, I would like to ask, you know, are we capable of executing on all of these projects? Um, because we seem to be struggling on even. With three at hand each. Uh, connector, uh, Pride Trail, so my only question would be, do we, do we defer for another year? So that would, might be a fourth option, uh, and also, and I think you, you may want to touch on that, is. Uh, we don't have a project manager or someone, unless you're going to be doing all these projects, and so we're either hiring somebody or contracting a consultant or. But if we haven't decided that, it makes it tougher for us to say, let's move forward with.
With this project.
Nine projects, five projects.
Uh, I don't know what Ross has in mind for the, the next little session of the meeting, but, uh. Okay, it's, or perhaps there are, we'll just touch on it. In the core budget is a project manager. And I have provided council some. Indication of what I think that project manager would look like. Um, and cost. Because I absolutely agree with you, can, there's no way that I could do this. Like, I, I get holes on the, my garbage can was missed and, um, my, my hose is leaking, you know? That's also part of those manager stuff, so, um. Yeah, we need, we need a dedicated project manager that we have in the core budget.
Whether, if I could add, there are also different ways to do that. One of which, you know, I think it's like, it's up, one of the ways is just, is to, uh.
Now, I'm trying to.
Yes.
Yeah, how we actually end up, you know, with. What the arrangement is, 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 uh, to be decided, but I have a cost in the core budget right now.
And I would also add the final thing is, every project we take, not sure. There should be a lot more to process, you should have, if that's changed, get two project, but everything. Rather, ever sort of frequently for costing purposes, PMs are left out of the equation, and the money has to be found elsewhere.
I'll just point out that the million-dollar highway tank professor. Built into that price, as you will see in the letter, is project manager.
I think the one, the one other thing that you need, first one, funding, but the one other part of the funding that I think. I'm not sure it's all scouted, and it's, not as well, but better, is the grants, their expiry dates. Um, and how we can spend them. But like the gas tags, maybe we could have that summarized in one place. And what do we want to do with the gas费? When the million dollar gift, the million dollar gift we got last year, but I would forget the name of it.
Yeah.
We, we have to spend, when we have to spend that by, that was big spend by him, it's your eye, but I still have to report back on it that way.
That's great. Down. That was such an action. So we keep, I keep reading something about the tanks or the two PRBs, so is that sort of? Where you were thinking of the million? Portion of it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the, the one small wrinkle there is that I'm going to need pre-authorization to go on. Because.
You're a retirement.
You're, you're, you're looking to, um, to approve the budget by mid-April, you know, that, that's it.
At his point, we consider the million-dollar grant that we got out of the blue. If we consider that to be allocated to, to all agree, which is the primary project of the highway tank. Um, so any money we got last year. Do we have to commit the budget time? And council, I'll make a decision that we can. Touch that with that, that particular grant and sort of condemn it off the book.
Uh, I actually, in fact, suggest that in writing at the bottom of that page, um. There will be some re-airmarking required, because that's been earmarked for something else.
Sure.
So if I could, sort of, there is, there's a bit of a. It needs to be factored into the larger budget discussion, but it's pre-approval, and you're able to do that pre-approval, because it's an existing amount of money. You can't do a pre, a pre-approval on something that you don't decide it on. But for that, and any other project that's already funded, council can consider. Pro-approval.
Okay.
All right, lots to think about, um, while we.
One last thing came to mind, sorry, one last thing. So the fire track. So when I'm looking in the news stuff, you're talking about MFA loans on two options. A twenty-year loan. And a five fifteen-year loan, good?
Yeah.
Okay. And. And, and this is not, because previously we were talking about a lease in a residential or whatever, there was just confusion, was it? Again, um. Something, oh, just, so just be aware, if we get an MFA loan that's more than five years. We have to get public approval, we get.
Yeah.
What I'm not clear about reading that stuff is. What does that look like? It doesn't necessarily mean a referendum.
You can use alternative approval process.
Was that the only two options?
Or a referendum.
Okay. I know, if you want to do either of those, I thought we could those.
You're already, you're even allowed round of financing, um, we gave the alternative method, and effectively what it is, you put up notice and then, but like, it was five percent or ten percent.
We've done one of those in this village a few years ago, and they've got defeated.
That's, that's, without any jump.
Which I'm told really infrequently happens, but, um.
Otherwise.
I will not suggest it would happen on a fire track or something, a little, a little more contentious.
End to end to end, if you go through, uh, public referendum, um, you're looking at three to four months for approval. I've heard a number of notices.
I was just reminding, we did do a proper referendum on the infrastructure. Is funding, uh, that got ninety-three percent approval, why? Because it was.
Do you mind?
Exemplars, yeah, people, no, people realized it was an issue. Yeah, because they were told, and, and people stepped up.
Okay, I think we'll move to, uh, public participation, and then, uh, we'll, we'll go from, uh, there and to close briefly, and come out of close, and. Wrap up the evening, any other comments before we go to the public? Help. Okay, if there's any questions from the gallery?
One question I have on Carl is that, you know, when those fencing and Bay Road, um, bridge was taken back? It's not a, a new place to, it seems like it's a safe function.
Document, very, 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 yeah. Um, uh, the vendor is coming this week.
Oh.
To measure up, or to request this.
Right, thanks. Okay, anyone in the gallery online, like to ask a question? Okay, uh, we have a motion to move into closed, so moved.
What's the reasons for being closed?
Uh, Ross, you gave me a couple of reasons, uh, it's, uh. Security of the local government property.
Well, not guys, like in the clothes, yeah.
Yeah, you just don't know.
I've got the description, it's not that, that now.
Ninety-two B six.
Salism D.
Number D?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Is it D?
D, can you read it out for us, Maria?
Uh, the security of the property of the municipality.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion, we have a second, all favor.
Yes, hello.
Carrie, okay, um, Ryan, you'll take everyone offline.
I'm going to.
Oh, David, please.